Homemade paper. I do pastels and drawing, some watercolors. And I have this idea to make homemade paper and add seeds to the paper, and then paint the flower from the seed in watercolor on the paper. And people could give that as gifts, and they can plant the paper. So it's a card and a gift all in one.
Okay, it's 5:00 PM. I'll call the order, call to order the Village Board of Oregon for Monday, October 6th, 2025. I would ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Higgins.
Here.
Kirshdorfer.
Here.
Knipfer.
Here.
Marks.
Here.
McDaniel.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And Van Campen.
Here. Thank you. Item three, approval of September 15th, 2025, and September 24th, 2025. The Village Board meeting minutes if correct and correct some mistakes if any. Looking for motion to approve Amanda and Tim. Questions, comments, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item four, public appearances, comments, and communications. Item for discussion and/or possible action. A, application for Class B fermented malt beverage beer and Class C intoxicated liquor, wine only. Alcohol beverage license submitted by Better &amp; Best Incorporated, doing business as Hers, Sushi Bar, and Ramen. The agent is, pardon me if I get this wrong, Warrenan Bunlam? Is that anywhere near correct? Thank you. For the premises located at 104 and 108, Janville Street. Please come up. And if you could just state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Wa-Ranun Bunlam. Everyone call me Renee.
Okay. Great. We had the info, your information in the packet. Did you have any additional comments you wanted to make?
Say it one more time.
The information about your licenses was in, provided to the board?
Yes.
Did you want to make any additional comments at this time?
I have one more of the owner that have like a certificate, passed a training to.
Okay, great. All right, that's it?
Yes.
Okay. And then the clerk informed me she doesn't have any additional comments. So then I will open the public hearing. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board related to the topic at hand. A time limit of three minutes per speaker is set unless otherwise modified by the Village Board. Anyone here to speak to this matter? Anyone? Okay, hearing none. I will then close the public hearing, and we'll go to item two. Village Board discussion, possible action on application. An agent staff recommendation motion to approve as presented. Tim and Paige, or Tom and Paige. Questions? Questions for the pitch, sir? Go ahead.
When do you hope to open?
Beginning of November, the first until the mid of November.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm really excited.
I am very excited too. Thank you.
Okay. Additional comments? Okay, motion by Tom, second by Paige. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Let's see. For B, presentation from Wisconsin Department of Corrections Juvenile Correction Facility project team regarding proposal for facility located in the city of Pittsburgh near the existing Oak Hill Correction Institution to connect Oregon Municipal Water and Sewer Systems. Let's get the motion on the table. Motion of direct staff to work on facilitating and negotiating the extension of water and sanitary sewer services to the proposed juvenile correction facility and finalize village cost reimbursement agreement for project to be approved by the village at a future meeting. See, we got Tim and Paige. Any folks wanting to come up? Oh, you're somewhere already. Okay. We just state your name for the record, sir.
Courtney Cooper with BWBR Architects.
Great. Right ahead.
Presenting on behalf of, on behalf of the State of Wisconsin.
Okay.
And Department of Corrections, and then.
Do you want to control that?
Yeah.
Perfect. We'll be taken care of.
Thanks. So with me are members of the Department of Corrections and Department of Administration, and then we also have our civil engineer with us in case there's any questions. All right. I'll wait for the presentation to come up on the screen.
We all might be waiting.
Can you repeat what company you're with?
BWBR Architects. Sorry about that.
BWBR.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, here, I can start off because that slide is part of what I'm going to say here. So the Department of Corrections plans to construct a new Type 1 juvenile facility on DOC-owned property near the US 14 and County Road MM interchange. Property is located within the city of Pittsburgh, but it would be difficult to connect to the city's utilities since the closest points are several miles from the property. So we're here tonight to request a connection to the village's water system and an expansion of the existing sanitary sewer service agreement with the Department of Corrections. As a side note, the project went before the Pittsburgh Plan Commission on Tuesday, well, this was a few weeks ago now, and received conditional approval pending the completion and approval of a certified survey map. We can just do it from yours if that would be simpler.
That's what we're going to do.
Okay. That's all right.
I'm just trying to.
So I'll just, yeah, okay. The project is part of a statewide plan approved by the legislature to build smaller regional facilities to replace the DOC's existing Lincoln Hills School and Copper Lake School in Irma, Wisconsin. The facilities are to be located closer to major population centers so that youth can have better access to family visitation and other community supports while at the facility. The facility would have capacity for up to 32 male and eight female juvenile youth. The facility will be near the Oak Hill Correctional Institution, shown in the upper left corner of that diagram, the Oregon Correctional Center, and the Grow Academy. The property is located north and west of the existing Grow Academy as outlined in yellow on that diagram. Go to the next slide. This shows how the facility is situated on the site plan. Let me see here. I think, oh, that's right. You have a little bit of a different one. All right. Yeah, so if you zoom in on the build, yeah, that area, so you can see the building is in the middle, and then there's some athletic fields and a agricultural yard that are around on the north and the east side of it, and then there's parking on the south side. And then there's an entrance road. It's not really, I guess it's not shown on this plan, coming from County Road M from the south. And then go to the, let's see here. All right, well, just, there's a tree buffer on the east side along US Highway 14, showing on that. And then, let's see here, right on, so on this diagram, this shows a public water supply currently not available along County Road M. So DOC considered several potential options for providing water to the site, including connecting to the city of Pittsburgh system, constructing a well on the site, connecting to the existing well serving DOC's nearby OCI facility, or connecting to the village of Oregon's water system. BWBR commissioned a water supply planning consultant, MSA Professional Services, to study these alternatives. And based on the study's findings, DOC determined that a connection to the village's system makes the most sense overall, based on supply capabilities, schedule, cost, and water quality. We understand that this will need to be approved by the Public Service Commission since the village would be providing service to a customer outside of its boundaries. DOC proposed to build a connection to the village's water system as shown by Segment A on the diagram, so that's the kind of bright line green line, yep, and that connects from the standpipe, yep, where the cursor is, and then goes north and then west, and then the facility would connect to the main over at the, yeah, where the cursor is now. This connection would be constructed by the Department of Corrections as part of the JCF project and then turned over to the village to own and operate. This would create a reliable, immediate link to the village to ensure service for the project. Based on modeling detail that our team received from the village's water engineer, Segment A would provide the required flow for fire suppression and peak domestic usage. And if you could zoom back out on that diagram. In parallel with the design and construction of Segment A, the Department of Corrections will also continue conversations with the village about a potential second phase shown by Segment B on the diagram, which is the purple line running along the railroad tracks from north to south. This would create a loop in this area of the village's system for redundancy and improved water quality. That segment is proposed as a second phase since it will require more time to coordinate land acquisition and/or easements on property owned by others, which is not required for Segment A. And then you can go to the next slide. As I mentioned earlier, the Department of Corrections has an agreement already with the village to provide sanitary sewer service to the existing DOC facilities in the area, and DOC proposes to amend this agreement to add the JCF facility to that. The JCF project would connect to DOC's existing system on the north side of County Highway M, east of the railroad tracks. If you zoom out, you can see it, or yeah, right there, yep. And that's north of the connection point between DOC's system to the villages. The connection would consist of both gravity lines, fourth main lines, a grinder, and a lift station as shown on the diagram. The current load from the OCI and OCC campuses is based on a daily population of approximately 900 occupants. The population of the proposed JCF will be approximately 120. Based on previous conversations with the village, there were not any concerns about the added load from this new facility. So, any questions?
Questions? Tom? Just trying to go through your Gantt chart, and so you're starting construction in September of 2026? Is that correct?
Correct.
And that would be when, when we would actually do the water, all the water work and so forth. Your construction for the whole facility, is that the, what's shown on the Gantt chart?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yeah, the whole facility would take about two years.
Go ahead, Ben.
I want to get my head a little bit more around the numbers, the capacity of the facility as of right now, and I thought I just caught you say 120. So can you remind me again, this new facility will house how many individuals approximately?
Forty youth, and then there's staff on top of that.
Okay, thank you.
Well, there's lots of staff, and that's where the 120 comes from.
Okay. My math was not mapping, and that makes a lot more sense to me. Do you foresee, obviously it's difficult for anyone to foresee, but would you foresee any expansion of this facility or needing to have more water service to this facility than what we're currently, what you're currently proposing?
So originally, we had designed another wing for girls. So there's 32 boys and eight girls, and we had originally designed for another eight girls.
Okay.
So the design allows for that to happen.
Okay.
I don't think DOC has any plans to do that, but we're trying to design it to allow for that in the future should they want to do that.
Got it.
Beyond that, it's pretty landlocked with everything else that's going on in the design.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm just curious where, this might be a little bit in the weeds, but where you might be planning on metering this main and where it would be a responsibility for us to be making sure there aren't any leaks. This is just a really long run on a, on a private piece of property that if there's no leak detection going on and no measurement of that water, then we wouldn't be sure whether or not there's, you know, something that we can do about that because it would be on private property. Do you know, do you have, you expect that to be within the building or at the property's boundaries?
So I believe we discussed that with Lauren, and it was going to be in the accessory building that's on the west side, if I remember correctly.
Yes, and, and I can take a little bit of this question, too. This, most of the main that you see here is actually going to be in an easement that our staff can access 24/7, so it's not going to be fully private from the north standpipe. That was one of the stipulations when we were kind of going through that preliminary design, is that our staff has to be able to get to it, and it can't be behind any fences. It will be metered within the property as most of our, most of our meters are throughout the village on private property, and we'd have to gain access that way, but we should be able to get at this to provide any service necessary without going through DOC.
So again, on the diagram, there's, there's the bright green color is how it appears on the screen, it's called Segment A, and that goes north and then west, and then it meets the purple line. So that whole bright green line would belong to the village. And then the part of it that would belong to the property would be the 12-inch private water main that's labeled on there that would go north. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? No? Okay, we have a motion, but Tom is second by Paige on this item. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for, all of you for coming in. Okay, item four, C, presentation from Oregon Community Access Media Inc. related to the 2026 Village Budget Request.
I'm Andy Wilden. I'm the Vice President of OCA Media.
I'm Paul Swicker. I'm a Executive Director and a resident here in Oregon. We'll start, Andy will be here to do some numbers talk and answer questions specific to the budget, and I'm here just to give you a brief overview of what happened in 2024 through our efforts at OCA Media. Mission for OCA Media was written a few years back, and it states, "Oregon Community Access Media, Inc., or OCA Media, is committed to producing and sharing videos that celebrate events and stories in the Oregon, Wisconsin, area." I believe we've taken that statement to heart and run with it over the last several years. OCA Media is an essential community-building service that provides local news, ensures government transparency, and delivers engaging, community-driven content here in Oregon. The Welcome to Oregon video that we produced several years back for the Chamber of Commerce has been watched over 21,000 times. OCA's achieved dramatic growth in its reach and impact, which demonstrates a strong public interest in local governance and education. We seek continued support to invest in and expand this service, guaranteeing it remains the community's most reliable and easy-access hub for civic life, news, and local information. There's a few numbers I'd like to share about our YouTube channel, which is our platform that we're able to get analytics from on our viewership. In 2024, we had 174,500 views of our content. 60% of those were live views of our live shows. We had 45, we currently have 4,500 subscribers, having added 652 since last December. And our social media has had over 192,000 views in 2024, and those are all organically driven. We don't pay for advertising or marketing for our Facebook and other social media platforms. 156,000 people were reached. That's an 87% increase since 2023. So we're continuing to grow our, our Community Access TV Station, which is one of the smaller ones in the area, but we produce a lot more than a lot of others in the area. Our YouTube channel, as I said, has over 4,500 subscribers. It's about over a third of the community in this population here, and our locally-produced content has generated 3.2 million impressions in 2024, indicating broad public interest in our services. In effect, Oregon shares pub Oregon-specific stories, sports, meetings, and more, which actively elevates the brand for the village. Where OCA Media is a crucial centralized location for local information. Local news publications have used our feed for stories for years. Our connection to the community is robust and growing, asserting its role as a key information provider. In '24, our YouTube analytics showed, I already said this, 4,500 views of, oh, I'm sorry, no, this is new numbers, 4,600 views of village meetings and 3,500 views of school board meetings. Providing this content on various media platforms confirm that more residents participate by watching OCA than by attending in person. And I'll take a little liberty with this, paraphrase it, to paraphrase in National Network News promo, significant Village of Oregon residents get their news from OCA Media than from any other source. I'd like to say, part of the experience that comes with OCA Media is our student experience. The backbone of OCA's team are Oregon high school students. Through these paid experiences, OCA can cover hundreds of events each year, and under the mentorship of experienced professional staff, students build real-world skills in broadcast television production, time management, and communication. Our award-winning content continues to take top honors in the Regional Film Festival that's put on by the Wisconsin Community Media Fest, and I'm very proud of our, our staff producers for that effort. In 2024, we generated $34,300 in independent income through both video production and sponsorships. $18,500 was, was brought in from sponsorships for Panther Sports and for some general program sponsorships from individuals and other organizations. Our media production of $15,800 included coverage for national and state sports championships. So we do step out in order to, in order to bring in more money as best we can outside of our, the money we receive from franchise fees. Let me continue. The OCA Media is consistently operated on a limited budget, relying on frugality and ingenuity, a strategy that is not sustainable nor scalable. The capital equipment we have is well past regulated usage dates, and that limits our long-term capabilities to serve the community. All staff are part-time and receive no benefits or insurance, making it difficult to recruit qualified staff. We're lucky to keep those who we have, and they're very good at what they do, and they're committed to what they do. In conclusion, OCA Media is trusted, is a trusted central resource that shares hundreds of local events and critical public safety information each year with thousands of residents. Our services from covering Panther Sports and Oregon community band concerts to creating timely videos with the village and school district on road closures, referendum information, and safety concerns touch the daily lives of residents throughout our community. Like to thank you for your time and consideration. Welcome to answering questions?
Yeah, I just want to echo everything that, that Paul said. We have, we have a real gem here, in my opinion. When you're looking for things that make your community unique, this is, this is one of them. And I, I guess I just want to echo the impact that Paul has mentioned and say that really during the referendum, this was probably according to the city's village staff, this was one of your main communication vehicles, and that's a vehicle that is super, super important. In my day job, we now have a communications person at the school district, and that has paid dividends for us and our support from our community. So I encourage you to continue to support this. I appreciate the consideration for the budget that we have in for, in front of you. We did put together, and we do understand that, you know, revenue, the revenue source that we've used historically is starting to slow, if not regress, and so we understand that. We are, we put together two possible budget options. We recommend a 0% increase, but we also, based on village staff recommendations, put together a 3% reduction. We do have a little asterisk there this year, that we do have a significant financial commitment for a piece of equipment that allows us to basically broadcast TDS and Charter that is, as Paul said, past its life expectancy, and we appreciate if there's some funding opportunities at the end of the fiscal year or into the next fiscal year, fiscal year, some funds that are available, and talking with the village administration, possibly there'd be an opportunity to help fund that. We'd appreciate that consideration. The broadcaster we have has lasted six, seven years, something like that. At the end of that six or seven years, depending on what's going on with cable TV, we're not sure that that will be something that we will fund again in the future because YouTube seems to be our, our major, our major way of communicating with people. So with that said, I guess we're open to any questions or comments you may have.
Questions? Tom? It would be remiss if, you know, one of the key strategies, values that we express routinely here is our transparency in operation and, and village government. And, you know, one of the advantages we have because we are here in the Village of Oregon is, is the audience that you've developed and that you're able to, to deliver our, our meetings to, to everyone. It's, it's an important element. I think it does make Oregon a little bit unique when you go out and look at other communities. It gives us an advantage when we, when we get into topics like we're going to talk about later, referendums and other topics on trying to get out to people and get them to understand what the role is that we fulfill here, and OCA Media is helping us with that, that activity.
I just wanted to acknowledge and personally send my gratitude to the reduction ask. In a world where everything is more expensive, getting any sort of a reduction is not easy, and I'm sure that it is not, it was not easy for you all to come up with some of those. I appreciate it. I appreciate looking at things where we can cut them. I appreciate looking at things where we can cut them. We're having the same discussions internally here. And so regardless of the outcome, I just wanted to send gratitude to you all for the work that that is and the willingness to acknowledge where we are in a funding situation.
What else? I had a couple of questions. Tell me what 3.2 million impressions means.
Those are basically the amount of times that our thumbnail from our YouTube channel was looked at through social media.
Okay.
So that's basically, it came up that many times, somebody shared it with someone else, might have been another school, picked it up and shared it, or on a football game, or it might have been through another source. So impressions are just that they're kind of a click on, oh, somebody saw our logo, saw our link.
Yeah. And then you said that 60% of viewers are watching live, is that accurate? And do you have an idea, like, the breakdown, how much of that might be sports, and how much might be meetings, or?
Well, I didn't bring the exact numbers, but I feel like 2,000 people were watching the football game Friday night, live.
Okay.
And probably check now, but there might be 30 or 40 watching here.
Yeah, okay.
Or 10.
All right.
But there were, there are a number of people getting their information through, from these meetings, from our source, which is a little easier than checking in with clerk of courts and getting an audio copy.
Sure.
I will mention, you know, muscles that are used are, you know, get bigger and stronger. And so even though not as many people are watching maybe perhaps right now than the football game, more people are aware and know the way to access this, just because of the football games and those other activities. So I think there is kind of a, something that benefits both sides of it that otherwise might not exist.
And we're gaining dozens and dozens of new subscribers to our channel every month. So to get 500 or whatever I had.
450, yeah.
Yeah, this year was quite a climb.
Yep.
And we don't see it stopping, because people are becoming more and more aware of the service we provide, whether they're here in town or they're watching it at home in Madison on TDS, which they can do.
Sure.
So Monona Grove people might have been home watching.
Right.
Or whatever. I don't know how many people in Monona might be watching this board meeting, but you never know. There are people in Germany watching recently because of the exchange students.
Okay. Anybody else? Tom?
I just, referencing that the 30 are watching right now, if there was 30 people in anybody's village hall meeting at, for any town meeting, you would think that there was a major catastrophe happening.
Yes, right.
You know, the fact that there's 30 people, and that's, I would also note that that's the number that are watching on YouTube. It doesn't include how many people are watching on TDS, which happens to be where a lot of the viewership happens for these meetings as well.
Unfortunately, we don't have a way to monitor that.
Or charter.
Okay.
I'll just add too, like, you're gaining youth as well. Like, my 10-year-old will watch herself on, like, one of your YouTube recordings if she's, like, at the halftime show, right, doing it, or, like, I'm sure she's watching right now, too, right? Like, just, like, I feel like you're probably gaining youth, too, which I think is really cool.
Well, hopefully, we're gaining them as employees down the line. We need some of them.
All right. Thank you both for coming in. Item 4D, public comment. This is part of the agenda. It allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. I think that's all I'm gonna read tonight. Anyone here for public comment? Okay, thank you. Item 5, approve of vouchers in the amount of $3,920,948. Pardon me. Tim and Amanda. Questions? I have one. Let's see, page 67 of the packet, 13788, Middleton Construction. I wonder if anybody can tell me what that might be?
I can.
All right.
That is a company, they're not in Middleton. The name of the company is Middleton Construction. They're an Illinois-based company, actually, and they have been involved in doing the construction estimating work for what the cost of the senior center project will be.
Yeah, all right. Great, thank you. Other questions? Okay, this is a roll call, vote, motion by Tim, second by Amanda.
Marks?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Van Kampen?
Yes.
Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
And Knipfer?
Yes.
Thank you. Item 6, consent to agenda. Items A through E, staff recommendation, motion to approve. Tim and Paige. Questions on these items? Tom?
I just had one question on the police training center use agreement. Why was a new agreement required?
New chief. Chief John Patterson was recently sworn in, and so his name's not on the paperwork, so we have to renew.
Okay. Anybody else? Lynn?
I hate to bring it up, although I don't hate to bring it up. Lauren, can you help explain to me this Oak Street amendment a little bit more? I feel like, from the memo, I can understand why we need to increase it, but it's not super specific as to what that dollar amount is for. And so could you just further explain that to me?
Sure. So essentially, it is for construction inspection services. So when we do stuff like today and Saturday, which are paving days, concrete pour days, underground work, anything that's not kind of just basic cleanup and moving things around, we do like to have and need to have an engineer or an engineering inspector on site to watch what the contractor's doing and make sure they're doing it to our specs and be the communication back to myself, to the engineering staff at Town and Country. So as you can imagine, when you're kind of paying somebody full-time to sit on your project site, it does start to add up. I will say that when we put this task order together, or this amendment together, Christian and I, Christian Reed being the project engineer, and I wanted to give you guys the absolute worst-case scenario. So as you can see with the memo, we're paying for this using Oak Street money, I'm sorry, South Main Street money for engineering that was never used. So Town and Country, I will say, in particular, in my experience with engineering consultants, tends to come in under most of the time. And so we did try to give that larger number so that we would not have to ask for another amendment. That said, we fully expect, especially given the schedule we're seeing now, we fully expect that to be much less that we actually pay out.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, motion by Tim, a second by Paige. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Let's see, seven, reports of committees, not. Eight, unfinished business, and is for discussion and or possible action. A proposal on agreement for professional consulting services in support of the old village hall redevelopment project with GSD's professional services incorporated in the amount of $94,000 in reimbursable cost. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Motion by Rick, second by Tom. There was a quite detailed memo. Anything to add, Martin?
Just, yeah, we have a great Martin Shakes memo here in the packet, so won't rewrite any of that, but just to refresh everyone's memory for the public, this summer, we discussed moving forward with an RFP, request for proposals, to pursue reuse of the old village hall at 117 Spring Street. So as Martin and I were starting to work on putting that RFP together, realized there's still a lot of questions about that building that we don't have answered, and just to be able to come from a proactive point of view from the village, know everything we possibly need to know about the building as far as its condition, title work, make sure there's nothing that's tying that building to any particular public use. The parcel does include Waterman Triangle Park and some of the alleyway behind the building, and obviously, a lot of history in our downtown, so wanted to just make sure there's no, for lack of a better word, skeletons to be uncovered that we want to know about. Hopefully, no actual skeletons, but just the dummies from our department training. So we reached out to JSD, they're a partner we've used before. Our library, new library project, they're also working in the area on the new senior center design, so they're familiar with the environment down here and have a lot of these folks on, poured on their team to be able to do some of this work. So again, the $94,000 is sort of that worst-case scenario if we did want to do all of the optional services or need to do a little bit of a deeper dive into some of these items to understand the condition and kind of what we're dealing with here at the old village hall. And then the hope is, once we have this information back, we can bring that forward to you and then determine the best path forward to getting an RFP out on the street.
Okay, thank you, Elise. Questions? Tim and Tom, I think Tom looks like he maybe, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, I just wanted some clarity on the memo talks specifically about the concerns with the building and things we need to know before we kind of ask somebody to make a development proposal. But then I saw the photo on page 127, and that kind of gave me the impression that maybe the scope of the project was expanding significantly. And so I just want to understand to what degree is Waterman Triangle Park and the driveway and the parking lot all included in this project as opposed to redevelopment of the old village hall?
Well, obviously, I think the assumption with this kind of RFP process is that it would primarily be the building. But as I mentioned before, the parcel includes the building, the parking lot, the park itself, the alleyway. So whatever type of, you know, sale would happen in the future, we would have to do a CSM and divide out a portion of that lot. So part of it is just to understand, you know, there might be maybe a parking requirement or some landscaping or whatever that might transfer with the building. Is there anything in that area that's, you know, that we need to be aware of? Also, you know, we've talked about potentially some type of redevelopment of Waterman Triangle Park. I think this is information that we're gonna need to know then as well, if there's, you know, commercial buildings added or some kind of rearrangement of some of the public facilities here. So I think it's information that would benefit both of those projects, potentially even the fire district, if there's some kind of expansion that happens over there, renovation, you know, there's some adjacent property there that would be helpful to know some of the information. I imagine most of what we're gonna be looking into is just village hall building itself, the built structure, and, you know, asbestos and other materials and things like that, probably less of a concern and focus on the other properties. But this is, again, primarily for this reuse project for the building, but I think while they're added and because the parcel is gonna pull up information for all of these areas, it will be helpful to know as we're making plans maybe down the road for redevelopment of the park space. Are there any limitations that we have there and that can kind of help make sure we're not making any assumptions?
Okay. Tom?
I just, how, will they be able to? So I, my recollections at this point, probably a year or two ago, we did some pretty big environmental impact study down here, and there's, that's where we learned that every place in downtown has a buried gas tank.
Oil tank.
Just about everywhere you dig. Will that be information that they can access easily, and would that help keep the cost down and so forth?
Yeah, I know, I think some of that work was done with the Janesville Street redevelopment, so I'm not sure the exact kind of, as far as where the, like, buried tanks and things like that were. So not sure of the full extent, I think there is some overlap, because, and also, yeah, with the senior center.
I think it was the senior center.
Yeah, yeah, when we did the due diligence work with Try North, we did, yeah, thank you, the phase one environmental assessment. So that was probably where a lot of that information was coming from. So, yeah, they could definitely refer to that, and, like I said, they'll.
Well, and we found buried gas tanks after that, too, so.
Yeah.
That weren't in that environmental study.
Yeah. Yeah, so that study will definitely be shared with them, and if there's, if that's not work we need to duplicate, then certainly would pursue that.
Okay. Lynn, please.
I had one question, and now I have two, based off of Tim's question. So this is the parcel. Is the parcel what we will put in for an RFP, or will we essentially ask, or request for proposals, that specific old village hall section of the parcel? You had mentioned having to divide it out. Would we do that prior so that we're designating specifically where we want developers to focus, or are we kind of allowing a developer to provide us a plan for the entire parcel?
I think it could kind of go in whatever direction we would want. I don't imagine, and maybe Martin can tie in here, too, that we would separate out the building before we would do the RFP. I think maybe we would say this is kind of the space that we are envisioning to sell and, you know, have talked about, and they're kind of developing some conceptual site plans based on conditions and utilities, and, you know, what would need to be accessed for, you know, space for dumpsters and, you know, to have that building kind of operate more or less independently. So I think it would be kind of up to the board what they would want to include in that. Anything else, Martin?
Yeah, that's exactly it. I think we, in an RFP, we generally outline what we have in mind as being what we want to sell or as part of this deal. It's similar to what we did for 249 North Main Street in that that was, what, three separate parcels, I think? And we kind of designated the whole site as an opportunity for redevelopment, but we included a condition that we wanted to have a public park space in there, and then we kind of left it for developers to sort of show us how they would propose something like that. And then we ended up what we ended up with, and we worked with the developer to do the CSM and divide the property in the way that they had proposed. So I would, yeah, I would agree that we don't want to do that now, because we don't want to accidentally, you know, leave 10 feet off that, oops, we should have included that one way or the other, based on this proposal, now we gotta go back and adjust it. So let's see what we get and then do it then.
Okay. And then my second question was on the costs, which is on page 123. There are three things identified as optional. Do, are we choosing those as of right now in the number that we were given? Are we to weigh in on that? I mean, who decides?
So I believe for most of these items, they would be required if there was basically concern and some reason to look into something further.
Okay. Okay. So they'll sort of give us their assessment as to whether we should probably add them to the scope?
Yeah, I have it, right now, it's sort of on here as just approve all the way up to including all of these items.
Okay.
And if through the process, we get information that maybe, you know, one of these isn't really necessary, or we don't feel like there's enough value in doing it, then we'll just not do it, and we won't spend the money to do it.
Great.
But this approval would give us the authority to go all the way up to and including all of those items.
Okay.
Anyone else? Rick?
I guess I'll just make the comment that I can't believe that we wouldn't consider looking at a condition report in advance of considering what the value of the property is. It's just always a chance that once we figure out that there's something going on afterwards if we don't look at it, delays in costs and an unexpected planning of what we thought the value of the property was is now different. So certainly support the concept.
Okay. We have a motion by Rick, second by Tom. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8- Opposed, motion carries, item 8B. Authorize the issuance of a Request for Proposals for fundraising consultant for the new senior center project. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Tom and Paige. This was pretty well explained in the memo. Anyone else want to add to that? No questions on this item or discussion? Lynn?
Sorry, there is a line, I don't, I didn't write down the page number, but it said that proposals based on percentage of funds raised will not be considered. Can someone just explain to me why we don't?
The Professional Association of Fundraisers considers it unethical for consultants to charge for fees that way.
Thank you, wow, you learn something new every day.
Any other, any other questions? I'm taking over for Phil for a minute. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Then item 8C, proposed community engagement plan timeline and survey for the Oregon Area Senior Center rebranding project. Staff recommendation, motion to approve as presented. Anyone from staff need to talk about this or? Oh, yeah, I guess motion, sorry, Tom and then Tim, sorry, motion. Tom, Tim, got it, go ahead.
So this is just follow-up on the conversation that we had back in August about potential new name and logo for the senior center. So we've now had some initial conversations with TICSE, gotten some ideas about what kind of process might be involved in doing that and wanted to bring this back to the board so that you could see what we were thinking about doing and sort of the timeline involved in that.
Anybody have questions?
I just one question, it sounds like you're sending the survey out tomorrow. And based on the timeline, is the survey ready to go?
We would be posting the link to the website and getting the QR code out there and getting some things on social media saying, hey, go here for the survey. But the survey is ready, it's pretty brief. We had some feedback from TICSE about what kinds of things they would find useful to ask people. And so, yeah, the survey is, if we, if you guys say launch tomorrow, we'll launch.
So the survey was developed by TICSE?
The survey was, they provided some of the questions. We said, well, should we also ask people what their ages are, where, you know, whether they're current senior center users, you know, try to get some demographic information so that we know we're not just getting all results from people who are over 70. Because if we're looking to the future, do we really want results that are all people who may not be using the building in 30 years, 40 years?
Forty-five.
Life expectancy keeps going up, right?
And so am I, this will be open for a month then? Is that the, just, you know, open through October to November 7th? If we approve that, okay.
And realize, this is just the initial community opportunity to weigh in. This is sort of providing enough background information for TICSE to start to get a real feel of, you know, how does the community view this building? And what's the primary emphasis that they would like to see? And then they create designs through that lens, bring them back to the village board to offer some feedback and help refine them. And then the community has another opportunity down the road to look at final, actual design product and make some choices about which ones they like, which one they like.
Okay, any other question? Oh, Lynn, go ahead.
I think I've asked this a couple of times and my brain just can't digest it apparently. Are we surveying people specifically about the senior center? Or are we surveying them about the facility that might be forthcoming or will be forthcoming that potentially also has the community gym? I'm trying to understand sort of what, who should weigh in on this survey? I mean, like you said, we want all ages and lots of different cultural backgrounds and things like that. But I guess I'm wondering, out of this, are we building a branding for the senior center as it is sort of today in the sense that is a gathering place for seniors in our community? Or are we using it as a way to guide how we want to brand the future building, which could incorporate lots of other ages?
My understanding is that we are trying to create something for the future building.
Okay.
The future building is a senior center. For those of you who heard that and don't think of yourselves as seniors, pretend you didn't hear that. But it's a senior center, it has spaces within it that are hopefully going to be enjoyed by community members of all ages. And so one of the reasons we want to get away from calling that the senior center is because that can be confusing, especially, for example, let's say you have a bunch of eight-year-olds playing in a youth basketball tournament and the people from Verona are like, wait, what? Our games at the senior center? We're supposed to go over to Oregon and go to the senior center to the, to the. If we can make a more all-inclusive name that doesn't leave people thinking, this doesn't make sense to me, then we're better off, I think.
Great, that's really helpful, thank you.
Any other questions about this? Okay, hearing none. We have a motion by Tom and a second by Tim. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Amanda. Let's see, the awarding of professional services contract to Town and Country Engineering for water system master planning and preliminary design of water storage facilities. An approval of task order number 26 with Town and Country Engineering for awarded services for not to exceed cost of $64,000. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Paige and Amanda. Did you have something else to add, Lauren, or?
No, it's pretty well contained in the memo. I'm happy to answer any questions. And we have Brian Burquist with Town and Country Engineering here tonight to also answer any questions you guys might have.
Tim?
Yeah, I didn't see in the memo any detail about the other proposals. There were a couple of references to it, but usually I like to see kind of what were the three proposals? Which is, this is the one we chose, and this seemed to be just about the one we chose.
Sure, that's, it's a great question and it's always, I struggle with it with professional services in particular. You know, bidding, it's a little less personal, it's just bids, proposals, people put a lot of time and effort into that. And so I did ultimately kind of come down on the side of just including the successful proposal. I am happy to give information as far as what the other firms were and kind of what their, what their approach was. It was pretty similar across all three firms. We do have a kind of ranking spreadsheet that we put together as well that has kind of numerically where everybody fell that we can also provide, if that's helpful.
Yeah, I would say in general on projects like this, that's something I'd like to see as it comes for us. I mean, just the context of you're asking us to approve this decision, in what context?
Sure.
What I'm asking, so.
That's a really good point.
Tom?
Yeah, I would echo, Tim, it was 230-some pages of the packet this time. And I kept trying to find the part that I needed to read that was really relevant and kept coming up with a Waterloo Public Water System. And pages and pages and pages, that is very important. I know in your consideration and your time, I guess I would look more for the cross summary kind of scenario. It just made it very cumbersome to work through. And I don't know anything about the other companies, I'm very comfortable with Town and Country. I know that we've used them before and it's a great, great company. And I appreciate that it isn't a huge amount of money in relationship to a lot of other things, we think. And it just, it just carried a lot of weight in the packet this time, another packet that was already pretty large.
Sure, the reason that the entire proposal was in there was just because the task order did reference the scope that was included in the proposal. And so I didn't want to kind of clip the scope out. Paradoxically decontextualizing it a little bit, but I'm absolutely hearing you about kind of making it a little bit more concise.
Then why is it a task order, not a contract?
That's just the way that the village has always contracted with Town and Country. I believe we have a master services agreement that we've negotiated. And so that's kind of just the terminology we've always used with them.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we have a motion by Paige, second by Amanda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the resolution number 25 to 35, a resolution adopting the revised village board outreach program policy. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Let's see, Tim and Paige. Questions, comments? Tim and then Tom.
The context in which this first came up recently was that the village outreach program requires a fair amount of staff time. Is this improving in that regard? I'm reading through it, I wasn't sure it did.
I think it moves the needle a little bit more. Yeah, I think the election period restriction is helpful. I think some of the verbiage about laying a little bit more burden of communication on the outreach coordinator is helpful. So I think it probably threads a needle of, you know, it sounds like the board really values this program and wants to maintain this program. You know, obviously we expressed some reservation on, you know, this is not maybe a place that we could save some time for staff. And so this is maybe a balance of those two perspectives.
Okay.
Tom, Lynn and Amanda.
I just wanted to reiterate what we've said multiple times about the outreach program. First off, the appreciation we have for the work that Lynn does on it and the amount and effort and the work that goes into it. I think it's extremely important when we want to say that we are open and transparent and it's a major component of what we are as an entity, that it just sort of underscores that. Even if people don't come up and talk to us, they see us standing there and we're ready to talk to them and we're open and we want to hear from them. So, see, please come and see, visit with us and talk with us at the next time you see us and really appreciate this program.
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on your concerns, Tim. Really, most of these policy revisions address to the concern that there might be a conflict of interest. In terms of the efficiency of the program, as the coordinator, I've really tried hard to take most ownership off the staff. And just by acknowledging it as a concern, we've already made steps in the last public notice. Candy sent me the structure of how she does our public notice and so I was able to sort of structure my email to her in that way. So we're, I think, making gains outside of policy revisions to try and make it as easy as possible. You will see that, you know, for the social media posts, that will still have to be done officially through the clerk. So that will put some ownership and so we will ebb and flow that, you know, as we need to. I don't expect that the social media focus is something we'll consistently have. So the hope is that we will be able to potentially lean on staff more right now and then less in later parts of the year.
Amanda?
I was waving goodbye to Brian. I did not have a question, he kind of nodded and I went like this and he thought I had a question.
Well, now you have to have one.
I will, I will make a comment too then, as long as I have the floor here, about like social media and stuff, and this is more a question for Candy. Like, is it, you know, helpful if we can, you know, the more things we can do, like when the German students came and we gave them a tour and I sent you some pictures and I had some proposed text that you could edit or whatever, is it pretty easy to just copy paste and put in there? And, you know, anything we can do like that for events, that things we want in socials, if we can pre-write up something so that they can approve it and just, that's helpful, I guess.
Yeah, and I will say Lynn has been very good to work with, so Lynn, we'll give you the kudos for that.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we have a motion by Tim, a second by Paige. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item 8F. Right away negotiating contract with Gruber Consulting LLC for real estate acquisition services related to the county highway CC slash Alpine Parkway intersection project for costs not to exceed $5,760. Staff recommendation, motion to approve. Tim and Amanda. Of late, we've had a number of these by Gruber. I think everybody have a understanding of what's going on here. Questions, comments? Okay, motion by Tim, second by Amanda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, item nine. New business items for discussion and on possible action. A police department operation staffing along with lane, long-range planning, including employee compensation, third-party operational and staffing study, financial planning and budgeting and employee benefits, including village-wide employee benefits. Let's have a presentation, if any, first.
Sure, yeah, and I can go and Chief, if you want to weigh in too on anything. So this is a little bit of a conversation born of some of our recent village budget discussions and kind of coalesced around a convers, an internal conversation for our budget when we were meeting with departments to go over, you know, everybody's department budgets. And we got to talking with Chief Pagan cough and Department about some of the things that have obviously been well documented and been part of packets and discussions over the last few months and few years in the case of some of these issues. And we started to kind of come around to an idea of sort of transmitting a sort of a plan or a series of activities that we have talked about in some cases or are sort of kind of existing out there in the mid-range or even some things that maybe are out there in the long range towards addressing some of the issues that we've had with police department in terms of staffing and retention and recruitment and that sort of thing. And so I think those issues are pretty well documented. We've talked about them quite a bit over the years. I obviously have a pretty lengthy memo in the packet and on those first couple of pages spent some time reiterating some of those concerns in terms of burnout and having some of our, some of our staff doing some additional duties, including the chief being the SRO right now and maybe through the end of the school year as well. Relying on overtime, having, you know, 60% of our officers being, having less than three years of experience. So all of the things, right, that we've had going on. And we are, we do find ourselves in a place where we only currently have one vacancy right now and we're hopefully, hopefully that will be filled.
Within the month.
Within the month. So that's a good thing. We find ourselves in a place where we feel pretty good about, I think, our existing staff and the quality of the people that we have. But we also have, we also kind of feel like we're in a place where we have the opportunity to be a little bit more proactive or at least be a little bit more, send some more messaging that we are trying to do everything that we can do to make sure that these challenges are addressed and that from the top down in the organization, we are all on the same page of doing those things. So a couple of things that we talked about, and obviously I have listed here in the memo that we wanted to cover with the board, is a couple of things that we already talked about, which is, number one, the placing the sworn management staff above the median market for wages. It's something we've talked about. It's something we've talked about before. It's a priority that we've had in our budget conversations. It is in the 2026 draft budget as it's been drafted. So it's in there. That's something that we're, we, we want to make a priority because we know that this, these particular folks on our staff are disproportionately burdened right now because there is such inexperience in the department. These individuals are taking on a lot and we want to make sure that we're demonstrating, you know, this is one tool that we have, which is wages, and we can show our appreciation that way. The second thing, and we've talked about this in our budget conversations, is the operational and staffing study. And there's a, a lot of reasons why we think that this will be beneficial, just in terms of being sort of that third-party independent verification, validation of a lot of the things that we are hearing from the department in terms of staffing needs and workload and operational efficiencies that might be able to be borne out of, out of this effort. And we also see it as a little bit of a vehicle to use towards some future efforts in terms of maybe referendums and things like that. And so we've talked about this. It seems generally that the, the board has had some consensus around that this is something that we want to do. But one of the things that we talked about was, well, there's no reason why we can't just start it now. Because we intend to fund this through prior year budgetary surplus. And so, you know, we've had these conversations as part of sort of the twenty-six budget, but why would we need to start it in twenty-six? We can start it now. So that's something that we're putting forward here this evening is let's start that process now. Because that's just that much more time saved when we're talking about some other things in the future. And so then, two other things that are a little bit more on the horizon here over the next maybe twelve months. It appears that sort of the way that things are kind of shaping up for the 2027 budget, there are some things that are lending it to be more towards a public safety-heavy budget. And because, number one, we obviously have to do union negotiations with officers next year. Twenty-twenty-six is the last year of the current contract, so negotiations next year and then twenty-twenty-seven will be the first year of the, the new contract. And I think we can anticipate that we'll want to think about things like wages and maybe even benefits as part of that and how that all works together with some of the challenges that we've had and how we can work towards addressing some of those things. So we could, can expect some, some investment there. We know that the department has a need for additional staffing. We went through, obviously, the referendum process this last year and we know that there's at least a need for three additional staff that the department has put forward over the next couple of years. And so this seems like a good place, good opportunity to add another staff position in 2027, considering that we're focusing on some other departments in this year's budget. So, and, and top of that, just beyond the police department, I mentioned here too, the, the fire district also, and we're talking about public safety. We know their staffing plan is indicated. They want to see two additional firefighter EMT positions in 2027. And so when we're thinking about all of those priorities on top of just basic, you know, cost of living increases to all staff and just inflation of, of operational costs, we need to kind of be thinking and be aware of all of those things as we're moving forward. So this sort of dovetails a little bit into another mid-range thing to, for us to be thinking about, which is the referendum option again, and particularly from a public safety perspective. And revisit this option because, you know, we've had some conversations about, you know, coming out of the referendum in April about, well, we need to look at the expenditure side of the ledger. And we've had some of those conversations and generally, at least collectively, there's sort of been a conversation around, well, we, we like the services that we have. We want to try to maintain those services. So if that is the expectation or the desire of the board, then, you know, we need to go back and talk about the other side of the ledger again, right? So if we, coming out of the referendum, there was some conversation about, well, maybe there's some things that we're going to do on the expenditure side and then we'll revisit a referendum in 2028 was one, one of the early years that was thrown out. Well, if we're not going to visit the expenditure side, then we need to think about the revenue side again. And maybe need to think about that sooner than 2028 based on all of the things that we know. And so I think there's a little bit of a convergence of some of these, all these little items here and, and this particular agenda item where we're talking about a police department staffing and operations study. So there's going to be some good information that comes out of that that is probably compelling and presented in ways that are hopefully understandable. And if we're talking about wanting to maintain services, then we need to talk about revenue. And if we're going to talk about referendums, then there are some things that we know about referendums. We know that public safety tends to be a category of things that people support and referendums seem to pass at a higher rate when they are public safety focused. And we also know that, just based on the data, that referendums also tend to pass at higher rates during November elections, for whatever reasons. So is there sort of a marrying of a bunch of things here where November 2026 is an option for a referendum, for a public safety referendum? And then we can use the staffing study to kind of use that as a vehicle to communicate out to people what's going on and then sort of transition into kind of a public relations communications effort at some point next year. I don't know that we're ready to say that. I know I'm not ready to say that that's something we should do yet. But I think by getting the staffing study going more quickly, we can assess, especially at the beginning of the year, maybe first quarter of the year, how long is that thing going to take and what is that going to look like? And do we feel like we have enough time to turn that into something for November twenty-six? Or maybe we're looking at spring 2027 if we feel comfortable with that. But at least we, by getting that study going now, we feel like maybe that opens some doors to having some of these conversations and giving us, giving the board some options for some different ideas. So want to sort of put that idea out there and, and have the board kind of mull it over and think it over. And then the last thing that we have here, number five on our list, is something a little bit farther out. But I think is maybe helpful in sort of the long-term messaging to certainly police department staff, but also village, village-wide staffing as well. But it's a sick leave payout retirement benefit. And of course, the intention behind that is retention, right? It's, it's keeping tenured, tenured employees here longer because there's a value at the end of their retirement that they can cash in in some sort of way. And so I had a little bit of a history on, on that. We know that there are some other municipality, neighboring municipalities and comparable municipalities in Dane County that have a variation of this benefit and we, we hear about that in terms of our retention and recruitment efforts. And so the big challenge with something like this is how do you fund it? And we happen to have a little bit of a unique situation going on over the next ten to fifteen years with our tax increment districts. We'll have, we'll be having to repay quite a bit of money back to the general fund for support for many, many years. And so we have an opportunity where we have sort of a sustained inflow of money that is over a period of time, but is only for a certain period of time. So it doesn't make sense to use that money for operations in any substantial way. So maybe this is something that we feel like here's an opportunity to have this potentially really valuable benefit program for our staff. So I wouldn't foresee something like this being able to be viable within maybe even five years, maybe even up to ten years, when we're talking about the, the flow of which the money will come back from the TIF districts. But it's something to sort of start thinking about and potentially analyze financially to see if it's something that can be sustainable for us. So I guess all that to say is to just put all these things, especially with, you know, some of the issues with the police department where we feel like we're at and we feel like we're at kind of a, maybe a little bit of a juncture here where we do some of the right things and we feel like we're really moving in the right direction. And we want to certainly push ourselves that way. So I think there's a couple of things that kind of have in motion with the 2026 budget, some things to think about at least. And we certainly would love to hear feedback on if we're going down the right threads there. And then I guess in terms of like actual action coming out of this, this evening, we would, we would be seeking some sort of motion to get the sta, the staffing study going and then also to pursue an analysis of the, the sick leave benefit as well. Is there anything, Chief, if you want to add anything?
I'm happy to take any questions. You know, and I tried to put myself in all of your shoes. And if one of the questions you have in the back of your mind is, well, you know, you've been under staff for a while, you know, getting you back up to staff where you're currently at, would that help? No, this is kind of comparing apples to oranges as far as our current staffing. Regardless of what our staffing is sitting at, no matter what, we're going to have people working. Hence the reason I'm the SRO. No matter what, we show up. We will work. There will be enough people working to answer calls. The problem is, is the demand is going up. I mean, it's no surprise to all of you. Our population's growing up. The demand's going to go up. And just as they said in the last referendum, you know, we showed the data there too. We're spending more time on calls because many of them are mental health crisis-related and it just takes time. But also many of these calls, you know, there, there's an increase for, you know, more than one officer to go. And if you're talking about retainment, it's not a good feeling to go to a call. It's a dangerous call by yourself. And if we already have two officers tied up on a domestic and you have one officer going with backup, maybe twenty minutes out, if you're lucky. It's easy to start considering a different agency that might have ample staff to actually answer to all of that need. So, you know, and when Martin and I met, that was, was something I, I really spoke heavily to is we're going to get up to staffing, but we're still going to have the same problems. When our traffic is dropping dramatically, especially during our busiest times, which our busiest times when I started used to be Friday and Saturday night, seven PM to three AM. Now it's every day. Especially second shift, but day shift is really busy. The SRO is really busy. The demand is just getting heavier and heavier. So if we don't try to find aggressive ways to address this, and that's why I appreciate Martin putting together this memo, is we're going to see a decline in the quality of service. And I can tell you, that's one reason I stay here is because I want to give the best quality of policing service I can to this community. And that's why many of my command staff and my supervisors and even my officers stay here. We talk about money, but that's also another retention tool. We want to feel like we're making a difference. We're, we're doing this job safely. We're backing each other up and we're just, we're doing the best we can for our community. So I'm happy to take any questions, but I am a little concerned about this misconception of, well, but once you get up to staffing, you'll be great. No, we show up every day. We, we, officers are working a lot of overtime. Some of us are taking on two roles. We do it because that's what we've sworn to do, is to take care of this community. But even in, like in the next month, we will be fully staffed, hopefully. You know, it's still going to be the same problems.
Okay, questions? Tim and then Lynn.
Couple of comments. First, another Hall of Fame memo, Martin. Great, great blending of the, the short-term problems and the long-term solutions. So thank you for that. It was fascinating reading. I would say it is critical that we retain the leadership we have in the Oregon Police Department. And so I am fully in support of coming up with plans that lead to better retention of our senior staff within the department and also then showing career paths for younger officers. I think the consistency of approach in a community-focused police approach is only going to be achievable with stability in the staffing and the leadership in the department. And I think that then becomes a critical component of the trust that the community has in the police department is because the policing is done in a certain way. And ironically enough, that's part of what leads to the calls taking longer because it's not just slap the cuffs off on and send them to lockup. It's understanding what's happening and maybe considering the mental health crisis and maybe considering diversionary types of approaches to the problem. And that takes a little bit longer. It takes a little more patience. It also takes you not walking into that burned out and sick of this crap. So I think it is, this really outlines the problem brilliantly. And I absolutely wholeheartedly support the plan going forward.
Lynn.
Yeah, I'll echo a lot of that. I have always felt like from this seat, there's not a lot that I can do in making an officer feel seen because I'm in this really nice room and I'm not in danger and I'm not tired and I haven't been working overtime and I'm not driving a squad in the middle of the night. And so I think that this is a great way for the board to step up and say, we see you and we see your struggle and we're going to do everything we can possibly do. I think the recruitment has been a huge focus for the last couple of years. Again, nothing I can do, but clearly you guys have done a fantastic job at that. And so now it's, it's kind of passing the baton to say, what can the village board do to help retain some of these gems that you've recruited? So I think that I'm fully in favor of this. The one question I had, and I think I know the answer to this, but I would love to just get your read from this, Martin, on what you know. So for the operational and staffing study, I'm assuming we're engaging somebody in this field, like in the field of law enforcement and, and how to make efficiencies and how to find unique ways to retain staff and, and things like that, correct? This isn't just like a run-of-the-mill, we're going to do a staffing study. We're really going to focus on what law enforcement specifically needs.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, so it would be similar to how we've sort of done some of these other processes where we do a request for proposals. We put this need out to the world. We solicit qualified third-party law enforcement consulting-type firms. You know, just doing a little bit of, of research. You know, there's some, some national outfits out there that are, are come up a lot in Google searches. But there's also some things in, in Wisconsin. You know, some of these municipal consulting firms that do other things, you know, public works and engineering and things like that. And even HR firms, they, they have, you know, subspecialties where they have a small staff or some staff that are, you know, former police chiefs or have, you know, years of law enforcement background that do these sorts of studies for municipalities. So, yeah, I expect we put it out there and, and hopefully we'll get some really good qualified firms that will put in for it.
Great, thanks.
Amanda.
Okay, yeah, again, great memo, like outlining all the points. I, I support this as well. There's just a couple of things that I wanted to clarify. The next opportunity to go to referendum for a fall election is 2026. So we'd have to get going on that right now. And in the past, I've thought, well, probably 2028 would be the earliest possibly, but I'm rethinking that now, honestly. I feel like this is something we should jump on because in 2027, there is no fall election. So with the next, that, that's all we have until 2028. And if we want to make public safety priority in 2027, as in point three, we'd have to do a referendum next fall. And honestly, I think it's a good way to indicate to the public where we are. You know, even if we go to referendum and it were to fail, I mean, I'm hoping it doesn't. I hope it's successful, right? But if it fails, the public's going to see us, hey, we are serious, like, this is a problem. And, you know, maybe contact state legislators and it might force a, a, a little harder look for people at, at providing money for public safety. Because our last referendum was also very, a lot of public safety focused. And then the other thing I, I had more of a question about, the, I love the, the sick leave payout idea from TID funds. My only question is... idea from TID funds. My only question is, the state allows us to keep a TID open an extra year for funding for affordable housing. And I I don't know that, I guess I'm questioning how that would work. Would we take, would we still be able to do that and take that extra year's worth and put that aside for public housing, but give the bulk of it to the sick leave program?
Yeah, so, and this is, it's primarily TID III, which has a lot to repay. So, and very briefly here, I guess, so, and we'll take TID III specifically. So TID III did a lot of infrastructure projects. It was started, it started in 2005-ish, and there was a lot of projects that were done, especially in the downtown area. And so the TID had a lot of debt. It didn't create a lot of value, new value in the downtown, which is which was a very common phenomenon that happened in a lot of communities who created downtown TIDS where they're just, there's already, it's already built out, there's already value there. You couldn't create a lot of value on top of that. And so what ended up happening is you have, you've done all these projects and there's now these debt payments. And so now what ends up happening is your general fund ends up having to pay into the TID to make sure it can cover its costs. And so this has happened pretty much for the entire lifetime of tax increment District III. And we'll be talking a little bit about this in the budget. But that support from the general fund is going to be ending very soon, within the next three years. And there's something like, I think it's almost 3 million in TID III alone, where the general fund has paid the TID 3 million dollars. And so now with the remaining years of TID III being open, once they are now done needing that support, it's going to start paying back the general fund. And so that's still within the existing lifetime of the TID. And so once we get to the end of the TID, its lifetime, we have the option of adding another year onto the TID. And then that is when we can use those funds for the affordable housing piece of it. So all these repayments will happen within the existing lifetime. And then at the end, we can take advantage of that little feature in the TID law as well.
Okay, good.
Tom?
I guess I just wanted to echo a lot of the appreciation for what's been put together here. I really like the idea that we've got some very short things, short term things we can, we can start moving on as soon as we can get an RFP out there and get that that study going on. There's some medium kinds of things of of working and trying to improve and starting to look at the 2027 budget and how are we going to make that a priority within 2027, and then a longer term analysis on it. It just still becomes a question of of getting community support and letting them understand and know. I think everybody, I've never met anybody who really has big complaints or issues or problems with the police department. They all value the police department and the staff and the work that they do. They've they've got a great reputation in the community. I think we need to take some action as soon as we can and and get that and let the people, let the officers know that we support them, we hear them, we're trying to find ways. They obviously, we obviously have a difficult path to get there, but we are absolutely in support of their work.
Okay. And then Amanda?
Yeah, I was just going to say the same thing. I definitely agree with everything everybody has said. I'm in favor of the idea of getting the sick time plan back together, certainly like the way that it was going to be funded. You talked about retaining and attracting retain is what we need to do. We've done some attraction now. We're talking about making sure that we're above the median standard for pay, that's attraction. We need to do some retaining. And I think that doing something like this is one of those places. We have a pension, we have vacations for attraction and and retaining. We need something that balances sick time now. There's even programs that'll help us save and defer some of this compensation that might otherwise get used because it's going to get lost otherwise. Instead, we're going to have ways of being able to allow people to defer that potential cost to our operations on a yearly basis to the end of their career. And I'd also suggest longevity pay is another option alongside of raised wages because, again, you're trying to find other ways to retain. I did have a question. I know that we were talking about potentially looking at this for safety in general. That would include fire and EMS. You did mention something about the the fact that fire and EMS is actually doing sort of studies and stuff that way, that they already kind of have an idea of what their staffing needs are going to be, so that we can have an overall view of the future revenue needs for all of that kind of staffing?
Yeah, I know the the district has had a staffing plan that they've they've had out there for at least a couple of years. And I know that they've always targeted 2027 as a place where they would really like to add two full time firefighter EMTs. And one of the points they make in the memo here is, absent a referendum or some other thing that I can't really foresee right now, I just don't see how we could do all of those priorities, right? I don't see how we could do the union negotiations and try to do a little bit something more there, potentially add an officer position. And of course, we have to talk about village wide employees, right? In terms of, you know, maybe 1%, increases, that sort of thing. And then you add on the operational inflation of existing services and that sort of thing. And then you add on two full time firefighters on top of that. Now, we only pay, you know, a little bit less than 70% of the cost of the district district's costs. So if the expectation is that most of that cost is going to be borne by the municipalities, you know, absent the district finding efficiencies within its own budget or some other revenue sources themselves, I don't foresee how we can do, we're going to be able to do all those things without giving up something else.
And I think that points the timing of the potential for this next year's referendum, rather than being able to wait till 2028 to think about it.
And there's, there's a little bit of complexity when we're talking about if we're going to add in, and we should have these conversations. But if we're going to add in fire and EMS costs into a public safety referendum, again, I think that is a component that does pass in referendums, certainly. But it's a little bit interesting because of our district situation where if we go to referendum for those costs, what happens to the other 40% that is borne by the other three municipalities? Are they going to go to referendum? If not, and we, if ours passes, then how are their portions funded? Or if maybe we all go and then only two of them pass and two don't, you know, it creates this weird situation where somebody might have the funding for their portion, but somebody might not. And then so how do we sort of balance that in a fair and equitable way? I have maybe some ideas about that. One of them is, you know, if we have the funding, we know we've talked about the joint fire and EMS levy exception. If we're still able to be able to use that over the next coming years, maybe we're giving up our portion of that to everybody else because we have the funding from the referendum side. So there's, I think there's maybe creative ways to think about that in order to get some of this done. And certainly, we can have conversations with the partners at large about ways to do that. But, yeah, all things to sort of think about.
Amanda, I think you were next.
Yeah, I just had a kind of a follow up question to the referendum stuff. If, big if, we were to do referendum in the fall of 2026, that would be not necessarily for 20, that would, that would be for our levy the following year, which means we wouldn't see it until 2028, right?
There is just enough time where you
Okay, okay, good.
So, you know, it's about the first Tuesday, right, of the month? So, we typically approve our budgets that second, or the fourth Monday, or the third, what are we, third Monday, third Monday of the month. So, and a great example is Pittsburgh, when they did their referendum, I was aware, they kind of put together two budgets. So they sort of had budget without the referendum and the budget with. And so when it didn't pass, so if it passed, they were ready to use that one and approve it within a week or two. If it didn't, then they were ready with the existing budget to pass. So there is enough time where we can get that into 27 operations.
That's so much work.
Tom?
I guess procedurally, what are we doing right now? We don't have a motion that I'm aware of. I guess, do we need a motion for to move on the plan?
I'm prepared to do that, yeah. I wanted to just quickly just reiterate the last four points of the memo because they're not, really all that's included in the motion. And I think clearly we're at a tipping point on the police department. And I think it's, I think the things that we're looking at doing tonight are very important, not only in terms of immediate action, but long term action. I just wanted to read these on page 399, just to reiterate these items. And that is, one, continue to support the 2026 budget recommendation, position sworn police command staff compensation above the market median. Two is initiate the police department operational and staffing study as soon as possible. Three, plan to prioritize public safety in the 2027 budget by adding one officer, anticipating competitive salary adjustments for officers in their next union contract. And four, endorse the continuing analysis of long range solutions, including a potential future public safer referendum and the creation of the sick leave payout benefit program. Accordingly, I would make the motion to direct the village administrator and staff to direct, excuse me, and staff to draft a request for proposal for a police department operational and study, staffing study for the village board review at a future meeting and obtain a proposal for the financial analysis of a sick leave payout benefit program. Phil, the village board review at a future meeting. That's the motion.
Second?
Second, I saw Tom's first. Additional discussion and questions? Hearing done. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, motion carries.
Sorry?
Rich, can you switch over?
Things are happening.
Okay, I have a question about this same item before we move on.
Please.
That that motion, which I liked and I supported, did not specifically talk about looking at a referendum in 2026 for public safety. Is that, I mean, in the four points that you read, Phil, it said that.
Right.
And I just want to make sure that that we're also looking at that if the board is amenable.
And part of that, the reason for that is, I want to see, how long is this staffing, how long is this going to take? Like, what is the timeline for this? I mean, if we're, it's like a 10 month thing, well, then we might need to think about this a little bit differently. If it's maybe four, six months, then maybe we feel good about talking about a referendum for sure then. So I think at this point, my suggestion would be, we have our options open right now. And I think as we get more into this, especially in the early part of the year, January, February, I think we'll have, be able to have that conversation of like, do we feel good about maybe where we are to be able to pursue this?
Is that enough time, though?
Yeah, that's the thing.
That's, yeah, I think that's, that's part of the conversation, I think, we'll need to have is, what is the kind of the the scheduling of all this look like? Do we feel like we're going to have enough information? Do we feel like we're going to be able to go out? Because we'll have to make a decision about the the actual question and the dollar amount and the purpose in August.
Okay.
So we'll have to, you know, between that time, it's just like we had, between January and April of of this year when we did the referendum, between August and November is really going to be that that heavy going out there PR blitz. But what does January through August look like? You know, part of it is obviously we're going to be doing this study and maybe there's some good synergy there of using that study to get the word out about some of these things. And then where does that sort of transition into PR and communications? And in, in my mind, using that study and what comes out of it has the real important pieces that we're probably hopefully able to transmit out to the public, hopefully in some, you know, compelling and understandable ways.
Okay.
That sounds good, thanks.
Probably go to the next item. Is anybody missing a break or just go ahead? No? Okay.
Go ahead now.
Excluding Tim, he's already taken his. Okay, 9B, presentation review of the 2026 village budget draft.
All right. So if you've been on the board here for a little while, or if you've been paying attention, this document is probably starting to look pretty familiar. Just a big copy and paste effort now. So this is, I guess, sort of the first official meeting where we're actually looking at the draft 2026 budget. We've had a lot of meetings about the 2026 budget, but this is the first time you've actually had the numbers and the full budget compiled for review. So I think when people think about budget review, this is really the meeting that they're thinking about. So we do have the the budget fully compiled. We've done a pretty substantial review of the general fund and the library operating fund at this point. So I don't, we're not really expecting any substantial changes from what we have currently in in the packet here. Everything else, special revenue funds, capital funds, utilities, we have everything compiled. We're obviously still doing quality control, just making sure everything's been keyed in properly. And we've accounted for all the different nuances and things. And of course, I've put this budget document together. I've done quite a bit of the overview sections, but I'll probably make a few changes here and there as we start to list out some more information and things of that nature. So usually, the last unknown at this point is we do have open enrollment for employee benefits. We've tried to anticipate any changes that might be forthcoming. Feel good about our our guesses, but there may be always that random thing that pops up that we need to adjust for. So we'll, I'll talk about sort of the major things that are playing into the budget and how it ended up the way it ended up. And we'll recap what we've done on capital and debt. And then I'll start a little bit into the general fund tonight. And then at the next meeting, we'll wrap that up and then do all the other smaller funds and the utilities. And then we'll decide if we feel good about that. And we'll get that publicly noticed for hearing. And then we have November 3 to take one more look at it. And then November 17, we have the hearing, making any last adjustments and then expecting village board approval at that time. So my approach to talking and presenting on the budget, which is my 16th budget I've been a part of in my career at this point, is, you know, a lot of times, a lot of municipalities will sort of start with different pieces of the actual line item budget, and then you kind of go line by line through it. And what I've found is helpful is to zoom out a little bit and talk about some of the bigger things that really actually influence the budget in real substantial ways. And so talking about property taxes, because that's what everybody pages to in the packet anyways, to see what the impact is. And then talking about shared revenues, which is another big piece of this. And then talking about employee costs, which is over 60% of the the budget anyways. And then a couple of other, you know, whatever notable pieces might be influencing the budget in particular this year. And generally, what I've found is if you can answer all those questions, the rest of the budget kind of flows a little bit more smoothly. So as far as property taxes go, I don't think, I think the story here, most of the board is probably familiar with. It used to be before property tax levy limits where your budget drove your levy. But now in levy limit world, your levy drives your budget. And so you don't get to, as a local elected body, to decide just how much property taxes you want to take at your own discretion. There is a defined calculation under state law that says this is how much you get. And so that really is the huge, the biggest factor in driving basically every budgetary decision that we make. And obviously, our conversations are stemmed from from this law. So I guess going for more specifically into this year. So what we know about this year is, when we talk about property taxes and how much we can take from year to year, the biggest factor that influences that is new construction value. So what that means is that in order to get more property tax levy from year to year, you have to grow in new construction value in order to grow your levy. And so what that means in dollar And so what that means in dollar amounts for us, for the village, you can see in this little chart here. And for twenty twenty-six, we actually have done quite well. So there was new construction value, and this would have been for twenty twenty-four, the full calendar year of twenty twenty-four. We had over seventy-five million dollars of new construction value, which is probably the highest we've ever, the village has ever had in its history. Certainly within this, these amount of years in this chart here. And then the actual percentage of net new construction value, which is important as we talk about the property tax calculation, is also pretty high. Probably the highest it's ever been, or at least in, in recent times. So you take the new construction value, divide that by your prior year equalized value, and you get this percent that it spits out, and then that plays into how your property taxes get calculated. So this chart shows that a little bit more clearly. So going from year to year, you have what's called a base levy. And that is the amount of money that you get to roll over from year to year. So that number is very important in terms of your operating expenditures, because you know that you can count on that money to pay for your operating expenses. And of course, the property tax levy makes up about sixty percent of our, our budget. Often makes up seventy, eighty, even ninety percent of some local government's budgets. It's really the only revenue tool that we have in substance in the state of Wisconsin for local government services funding. So you can see how that new construction piece kind of plays out, or has played out over, year over year. So what this three point eight nine percent translates into dollars is about a two hundred and forty-two thousand dollar increase, allowable increase to our levy, which again, is pretty substantial compared to what we have had in years past. And of course, we've talked about in the past as well, and I bring up some points here, when we talk about inflation. So the challenge with the new construction value being the primary driver of property taxes is that you would expect you have a certain level of service, and that you pay for a certain level of service, and that year over year, inflation causes that cost of those services to gradually increase, right? Through salary wages and benefits and cost of fuel and all of that sort of thing. And then when you're growing as a community, as we've talked about, that service demand is increasing. So the cost is not just inflating by normal inflating measures, in terms of just year-to-year costs, but you're, you're actually growing the amount of service that you need to provide to your community as well. So for the village of Oregon, that concept sort of worked out okay for many years, because our growth sort of outran inflation. So we were able to accommodate inflation and then also have a little bit on top of that. Now, I think in practice, that didn't really work out very perfectly, because we had lower wages at that time. Certainly had staff needs that weren't keeping up over that time as well. And what we really, what we really saw, and what we really started to feel the pinch, and why a lot of these conversations really have bubbled up to the top over the last couple of years, is what you saw happen between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-five, where all of a sudden even our new construction was not even close to the inflation that we were seeing in the wider economy. So our costs and we're outrunning our revenues pretty rapidly. And our growth was outrunning, is outrunning the level of service that we have. And so that's why you, you have the conversations and the things that are being expressed by departments in terms of, of needs. Another important thing to consider about the levy limit law is that if you don't use it, you, you lose it. So there's a concept that we often talk about, which is tax to the max. Doesn't sound great, but unfortunately, those are kind of the policy decisions that you are sort of faced with as elected officials. What happens is, you know, right now, you are guaranteed to be able to take this amount for the new budget. And if you decided, you know what, we need to, we need to have a tax cut this year, or we need to keep taxes flat, and by taking less of this, we can do that. Well, if you do that, you reset your base. So that when we come back next year, this base amount is lower than it could have been. And now you're making your calculations off of that reset base. So there are, there is a little bit of flexibility, albeit very inflexibly, in being able to kind of claw back those dollars that you may not have used, at least in the following year. And then there's some even more restrictive ability to claw it back over a period of five years. But in effect, what happens is if you don't take it, you're basically giving it up, is what I would tell you. So this, this part of the equation on, on property taxes and levy limits, when elected officials learn about this, they realize the risk inherent in saying, we're not going to take all of this, because you might say, things are good this year, but next year, we need that police officer. Oops, I wish we would have had that two hundred thousand dollars, we don't have it anymore. So what this basically does is it creates a lot of false policy choices for, for boards, where your only option really is, at least on property taxes, is we need to take what we're allowed. Otherwise, we might set ourselves up for things that we might not like in the future. I have the actual levy limit worksheet in the packet. So this is the worksheet that we have to fill out, that Lisa fills out every year, amongst many other worksheets that she has to fill out and submit to the state. And this, this is the, it's like doing, filling out your income taxes. You have a worksheet, and you kind of follow the directions, and they put a lot of numbers in there for you. And it spits out a number that says this is what your levy is for the next year. So you can kind of see, this, this top part is really where this whole thing plays out. So they just start you off, they just populate everything, and this is the levy that we had last year. And then you take out all the things that were, that need to be excluded, so that you get back down to your base levy. So take out anything that you levied for an emergency, which there are some allowances for that. Take out all of your, anything that you levied for debt, which we'll talk about in a second. And then that ends up with that six point two million dollar number, which is your base levy. You apply your net new construction percentage, plus there's some things that you can do with your TIDS when they're closing or subtracting, which we don't have right now. And that number gets spit out, and there's your base levy for twenty twenty-six, six point four million. And then you're able to add in some adjustments. The adjustment worksheet is here. And the biggest one, of course, is debt service. So we are allowed to levy more dollars to pay for our debt, up to the statutory or the constitutional limit. So that allows us to raise quite a bit more dollars on top of that, just for those purposes. But as I mentioned, when you start your levy for the following year, you have to subtract that number out and start over again, and demonstrate that you need this next, for this next year, what you need for debt payments. So we ended up having to provide some paperwork and some evidence to that effect. And that is the number that we are proposing this year. We also have an adjustment for the joint fire and joint EMS district increased charges. So there is a little bit of an exception in the law for, for getting some additional money there. And then there's a whole host of other things that you can potentially take advantage of. Annexation is one that we've, we've taken advantage of in the past, where we get some more land. We can add some dollars into that. But there's also a lot of very, very specific exceptions that most communities would never be able to use, or would be able to rarely use. So as I mentioned, then you bring those adjustments back up and calculate that in. And your twenty twenty-five payable, twenty-six allowable, ten point three million. So that's the amount of levy that we are recommending for the twenty twenty-six budget. All right. So what does that look like in terms of more specific on funds and where that all gets allocated and that sort of thing? So here's what the property tax levy looked like in terms of where it goes in the village budget last year compared to what we were proposing this year. So general fund and library operating fund, those are the two primary operating funds that we have. That's based for all of our government services. So you can see the increases there, what's being added there. And then our debt service fund, and like I said, the TID three debt service fund on the last item, they are still needing a little bit of property tax support from the general side of things. So that's overall six hundred and forty-four thousand, or a six percent increase on the levy this year. Over half of that is going to debt service, new debt service. And then just over a little, about forty-five, less than forty-five percent there, going to the village operating costs. In terms of debt service, we've obviously, you could see it in this graph, we've had a pretty substantial increase in property tax levy for debt service over the last ten years. And obviously, that's from a lot of our facility projects, of course, the new library, the village hall. We've done quite a few street projects, parks projects, things of that nature. So you've seen that ramp up over time of debt payments for those sorts of things. The levy exception for the joint firing EMS district, I talked about this. We've, we've talked about it with the, at our joint meeting a few weeks back. But we were able to take a little bit more levy for this by meeting certain standards. And we were able to do that again this year, so we were able to get some additional dollars there. Of course, we have last year's debacle of what happened there. We have, we took this exception last year, and we did it based on some guidance from the Department of Revenue, which proved to be not accurate by their own admission. And so we have a little bit of a situation where we have more than we were apparently allowed to take from last year. They are allowing us to keep it again this year. However, it is still out there on whether that they may penalize us in future years. And so of course, we have some legislation now that is introduced by our state legislators, Senator Markline and Rep. Jacobson on both the Senator, Senate and Assembly side, to permanently fix this issue for us. I sent an email to the board last week. There's actually a hearing at Senate Committee tomorrow, which I'm going to be attending and speaking to this issue on. But suffice to say, this issue was caused because we got incorrect advice. We proceeded for months, turns out it was wrong. And now we have some levy that apparently we're not supposed to have. And hopefully, that will be corrected. But at least for the purposes of the twenty-six budget, we have another year extension. So we have that fund for next year. Tax increment districts performance, I talked about this conveniently under the last item. But we, when these districts don't have enough money to cover their own costs, the general fund side, the taxpayer side must backfill that and support that. We've done that in three of our districts within the last recent history. And like I said, TID three predates that by twenty years of support. The level of tax support peaked in twenty twenty-two, over almost four hundred thousand. And now that's pretty much dwindled away. We only have TID three that we need to, to get through. This is actually the peak year, the last peak year of support. It's going to start to go down pretty dramatically in the next two years, and then not be needed by twenty twenty-nine. So all those TIDS are now self-supporting and, or have paid off their debts. And so now we'll start to see some of that repayment back, as we discussed. And I think, you know, the conversation with, with tax increment financing is, it's a tool. It helps encourage economic development. It's really one of the only tools that we have as local governments to encourage economic development. But there are trade-offs in policy choices. There are things that you derive benefit from by using these things. There are things that you sort of give up, that maybe you wish you wouldn't really give up when you use these sort of things. So there's implications on, you know, trying to balance the, the positives with the negatives when you're using this policy tool. I think one of the things to, to think about, when you see something like this, where we're providing support on the taxpayer side, it's also important to remember that these districts also are contributing a lot of money towards infrastructure projects that would otherwise have to hit the taxpayer side, but they're covered under the district side. We have about six hundred thousand dollars in debt payments that are being covered by these districts. That if they didn't exist, the village taxpayer would solely be responsible for having to pay that. And of course, adding six hundred thousand dollars more onto the existing would of course add to the impact that it's experiencing. So there's trade-offs in these sorts of things. But obviously, it's an important factor here when we're putting together the budget. So I had a little bit of a long analysis and discussion about assessed value and equalized value. I know we get a lot of these questions. I know elected officials get a lot of these questions about the process and what these things are. I'm not going to go through all of this, but please, I encourage you to, to read through it and understand what the, the difference is in how these things get set. But I guess for the purposes of our budget meeting and just property taxes in general, in terms of equalized value at least, we saw a nine percent increase over last year, which is another one hundred and eighty million dollars in value. Some of that obviously was from new construction. Some of it was from appreciation of existing value, people's property values going up. So you can see we've reached the two billion value mark now. And of course, when we talk about, back in the summer, when we were talking about capital and debt, and how that all plays together in terms of meeting the statutory debt limit and meeting our policy debt limit, when things are going up seven percent, nine percent, that certainly increases the amount of debt that we can take on, and that increases. We, we've sort of, in the last few years, kind of been growing, outpace, our growth has outpaced sort of our, our debt as we take on some of these projects. So we've been able to accommodate some of those projects and, and feel a little bit better about them because of, of our growth. So what does all this mean in terms of property tax rate, effect on individual properties? And that's what this page shows right here. So from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six, you can see the change in assessed value and the change in the tax rate per thousand. You can see the tax rate is going down twelve percent, at least in our estimate right now. But that, of course, does not necessarily mean that any individual property will see a tax decrease overall. Because if your values are going up much faster than your overall levy, you can kind of see in this example here, this is sort of a simple example. But if the total tax levy only goes up five percent, total assessed value goes up twenty percent, yes, your tax rate's going to go down, but an individual home value, which probably saw a twenty percent increase as well, ends up seeing a little bit of a tax increase anyways. So the tax rate can go down, but your taxes still go up. So what does that look like on any individual home? That's what this is intended to show here. Because when we're talking about market updates to assessed values, everybody's, there really isn't a way that you can compare apples to apples from year to year. Everybody's property value is going to go up at a certain percentage. Some might go up twenty percent, some might go up fifteen percent. It's all based on fair market value, and it's based on, you know, the type of home you have and all of these other different factors that assessors are required to consider. So there's no really way to just say the exact change is going to be this to this. In a broad sense, you really have to look at it at a micro level and look at individual properties. So in this case, over here, we're looking at assessed value in twenty twenty-four. We're assuming, let's say, home values went up right around how much assessed value went up this year, which was just over twenty-one percent. So if your home was valued two hundred thousand in twenty twenty-four, maybe it's valued at two forty-three in twenty twenty-five. So you can see what taxes on a, and again, this is village portion of taxes, what the village property taxes are in twenty twenty-four, and what they would be in twenty twenty-five. And we're looking at, in this case, about a seventy dollar difference. You can kind of see down the line what a different levels of assessed value would do. So in terms of the village's portion of property taxes, So in terms of the village's portion of property taxes, if you're looking at, you know, maybe the median value home, which exists somewhere in between these two right here, you know, you're looking at around one fifty, one sixty in added taxes to a median value home based on this, the level of property taxes that we're proposing. And of course, again, doesn't, this isn't, includes school district, doesn't include the county, doesn't include the tech college. This is just strictly the village's portion of the taxes. Of course, people have school tax credit that will add into this. And then, of course, at an individual level, there's the lottery and first dollar tax credit, which impacts all of this. So this is a very simple sort of rudimentary look at a change in the amount of taxes any individual property would get. And I always have a property tax rate comparison, looking at what the village property taxes look like compared to all other cities and villages in Dane County. And so there's two charts here, obviously, one on the left side here. Again, this is just the municipal portion, the local property taxes on a five hundred thousand dollar value home. So this is just the village's portion for this, for twenty twenty-four, the last year of data, obviously. And you can see, you know, I think I've done this every year since I've been here the last four years. Village of Oregon always sort of ends up down around in here, kind of the bottom forty, definitely below the median. So that's the case again in twenty twenty-four. And then on the right-hand side, this is the total property tax. So when we're inclusive of the school district, tech college and county, this is what the property taxes on a five hundred thousand dollar value home look like across all cities and villages in Dane County. So we can see we're exactly in the same spot. And we're right below that line there, which is reflects the median value. So we're in the bottom fifty percent there. And you can see kind of the variation in some of these communities, like Verona is a great example, where their city taxes are evidently lower than the villages. But then when you account for the school district, they're just a little bit more. So they have a little bit more on the school district side than the villages and the Oregon school district does. So you can kind of see some of those variations play out in some of the movement here. But Oregon is the same spot across both. Any questions I can answer on property taxes, assessments, et cetera, that I've covered? All right. So for the budget itself, we've talked, I think we've had a media, I think, on our agendas, we've had something about the budget since April, every single village board meeting we've had. So we've talked about this budget quite a bit. We've talked about priorities and different things. So what's, what we've ended up being able to do in terms of the pulling it all together is we've been able to do all of the priorities that we identified and talked about as far as the assessment that I had given on September second. So the wages that we talked about, the crew person position for parks, the youth services library assistant, the police management for the market median, the municipal clerk position, the streets lead conversion position. We talked about the county providing a little bit less for senior centers this year, making sure we can backfill that. And then also making sure we're starting to phase in some higher operating costs for the senior center building. And sort of an interesting dynamic, we were anticipating some retirements with the senior center next year. And so we have some vacation that we are likely to have to pay out for those situations. And so there's maybe a little bit of an interesting opportunity to account for those costs. So knowing that we're gonna have to pay those out. And then in the following year, maybe we can hope to convert that money that's already built into our budget now towards our building operating costs. So we've been able to do that to the tune of over thirty thousand dollars. Other things we've talked about, we've talked about the HR position, community development position. I think the last conversation, we were, the board is a little bit leaning more towards the HR as a priority of those two. The answer, short answer there is, we just don't have enough funding to fund either of them. Or even for part of the year, in my opinion. So those have been left out, and we've added, made sure that these pieces have been in. And I'll talk a little bit about sort of how we ended up kind of closing the budget a little bit, which has sort of led me to saying I wouldn't recommend adding these positions in unless we're going to take something else out. So had the budget resolution that we approved back in June in there for a reminder on where we have come from. This memo in here was actually presented to you, the Public Works and Utilities Committee, at their last meeting, talking about the parks crew position that we've added into the budget and just some background about that. And I think the committee had asked that that be forwarded along to the rest of the board, so you can learn a little bit more about where that comes from. So we talked about property taxes, obviously a huge influence on the budget. We talked about our priorities. And so the other big factors here that influenced the budget really come down to employee cost, right? That's over sixty percent of our operating costs. So I spent a little bit of time here talking about our compensation system and where it's sort of come from and where it, we did what we did this year in terms of the market refresh. We had our consultant before the village board back in May to talk about that. And so we implemented or worked into the budget some of the things that we've talked about in terms of trying to move to a new scale and making sure that some of these factors, with this three-step process was applied in terms of employee wages and getting those onto the new scale. And then also making sure that we have a minimum increase for employees there. We have, and you have in the packet here, the existing wage scale and the proposed new. Have a little bit more information on our wage scale. We've talked about, I have some more information on some, a little bit more specific things going on with some positions and wages. I know we've talked about the lead crew person. We've worked that in, that was one of the priorities. We did, had a couple of classification reviews of some positions. Basically, what that is, is, so in twenty twenty-two, we did our full compensation study, which evaluated all of our positions. And over the years, there have been times where we've sort of realized that maybe we didn't account for everything that we felt like a position might have been doing or does that we should have, or the position has changed maybe a little bit and we need to account for some of the things that that position is doing. And so we did have a request to look at the police clerk position. We did look at that with our consultant, and they agreed that the position should move up a little bit on the scale. They also, with that, suggested that we move the administrative assistant in the clerk department up on the scale as well to maintain some internal equity amongst the types of work that positions are doing. So overall, that's a kind of a modest effect on the budget, I think less than two thousand dollars for both those situations. But wanting to make sure that our scale and the way that we treat positions remains consistent in that process. Talked about management staff and wages. We have some opportunities in our public works department for promotions. We have two that are, have been recommended. These are both on the utility side, so they don't affect the property tax side. We've worked those into the utility budgets. And then our police officers are, of course, in their last year of their union contract. They have a blended three percent increase. And they also have a longevity scale that they may be impacted on in terms of getting a little bit more. So we've worked all of those into the budget. And of course, we have the union contract to negotiate in twenty twenty-six. Health insurance, again, a big component of that over sixty percent of our budget. We're on the state health plan. Employees have an option to pick three different health providers. Players do have some options this year in terms of trying to reduce their costs. If they're already on quartz, the cost for an employee is gonna go down one hundred and eleven bucks for the whole year. So there's a little bit of a net benefit for the employee there. GHC remains the cheapest overall for an employee. So there are some options if you are on quartz now or if you are in Dean right now, you have some ability to save quite a bit of money by going to GHC if that's desirable to you. Dean remains a quite, quite an expensive option that I don't know if anybody's going to use anymore.
I guess that's so much more expensive.
I, I'm not sure why. It just, that's just how it works out, yeah. The same thing goes, so the union has a little bit different of a calculation for their health insurance. Generally, that means they get a little bit better of a deal. Some years, it actually has worked out that they haven't randomly. But this year, they, a little bit better, but same situation for them in terms of they can experience a little bit of savings if they're on quartz. Or GHC is the cheapest plan, and people can move to that plan if they want to try to realize some savings as well. Retirement, of course, we have, we're in the Wisconsin retirement system. The employer, the village, has to make contributions, required contributions under state law. This year, it was six point ninety-five percent of an employee's salary. It's up to seven point two percent of an employee's salary in twenty twenty-six. And it's a little bit more for qualified law enforcement personnel. It was fifteen, it's fifteen point zero one percent in twenty twenty-five, for twenty twenty-six, I should say. And it's up from fourteen point thirty-two percent in twenty twenty-five there. Workers' compensation, another thing that fluctuates from year to year. But overall, that one has sort of been trending downwards. Village has really good claims performance, overall, few injuries and low severity. And just generally, workers' compensation rates across Wisconsin have been, have been going down. So you might see some savings in some line items there. The other big factor for municipal budgets is shared revenue. It's the second largest source of revenue that we have, that we can rely on year to year. That's money that we get from the state. So when you combine property tax and shared revenue, you're talking upwards of, for us, about eighty-seven percent of the revenue that pays for our expenses. So these, those two sources are significant. So I'll talk a little bit about what those are, show some of the history and where we've been over the last over twenty years in terms of shared revenues. We are experiencing, so the kind of the two primary ones now are the county and municipal aid and the supplemental county and municipal aid. The law was changed a couple of years ago where they do actually have the opportunity to go up a little bit every year now. And so it has been a little bit. So we're going from one sixty-nine in twenty twenty-five to one seventy-five in this program, to ninety-nine to three oh nine in supplemental program. That's offset this year by a little bit of a decrease in utility aid. And then expenditure restraint, we are not anticipating to get in twenty twenty-six. And a wrinkle on expenditure restraint is that we probably are not going to qualify for it for the foreseeable future. You have to have a property tax rate of over five mils or five dollars per thousand value. And now we are below that as we saw up above. And I don't know that we can foresee being above that anytime soon, but we'll find out. But you have to be above five in order to qualify for that program, which we do not. And another wrinkle, I know we hit on this point in the referendum quite a bit. When you look at two thousand and three's amount of shared revenue from the county and municipal aid program, that has the buying power of about six hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-five. But in terms of actual dollars, we are in the mid four hundreds. So again, that source of revenue is still, it's gone up in recent years because there was a nice law change here in, between twenty-three and twenty-four that added the supplemental county and municipal aid program. But in terms of where municipalities were twenty-five years ago, it still doesn't make up for that kind of buying power. One area that I was hoping that we would see a little bit more from and just did not was the general transportation aids. This is sort of the spot where I thought, maybe if we get what we've seen historically in the last few years, maybe there's an opportunity to fund the HR manager position for half a year. But that just didn't pan out. We've seen some pretty big increases there, and it just was a little bit this year. And the, sort of an interesting thing is, the, the state added three percent into general transportation aids in the biennium for each of these next two years, twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven. But, and, and our, our variables that calculated actually went up because our mileage went up and our dollars that we spend on transportation went up. But the pie is being eaten away at. So other communities must also be reporting higher things, higher costs as well. And so that nibbled away at the amount of money that is there. And so we saw kind of a smaller increase this year than what we have seen. And then, so lastly, probably most importantly, is investment income. So this was the revenue source that we used to balance the budget this year, which we have not had to do in prior years. So investment income is just simply, we have money in our bank. We have village money in the bank, and we collect interest off of that. We may invest it in different tools and different things like that. And then, of course, we get some money for that. And so in recent years, interest rates have been pretty high, relatively speaking. And we've seen quite a bit of investment income off of that to the tune of over three hundred thousand dollars last year and to over, already two hundred thousand dollars this year in twenty twenty-five. That has not always been the case. Obviously, you can see historically where things have kind of gone. And even just four years ago, five years ago, we only made fourteen thousand dollars off of investment income when rates were basically zero at the onset of, during the pandemic. And we've seen that in the twenty teens when the interest rate culture, I guess, was in those near zero percents. So now the Fed, you can see kind of on the target rates here, interest rates have been high. The Federal Reserve just did a little bit of a cut, and they've been sort of communicating that they're going to do a little bit more through twenty twenty-six. And so tried to kind of project that out, what, if what they're saying is true and what they hold by is true, what that might look like. So like I said, in past years, we haven't had to rely on this source of revenue as a source of funds for actually funding our operations, at least to a greater degree. So like this year, for example, we only budgeted seventy thousand five hundred dollars, meaning we only anticipate needing seventy thousand dollars from investment income to actually fund the costs of our operations. And so what we're saying in twenty twenty-six is, we think we need a hundred and seventy-four thousand in order to balance this budget, pay for our expenses. And so going into this budget, I felt like, yeah, we could, we could increase that number and feel like okay with it. This is a little bit farther than maybe I would have liked to have gone with it. So it's something I think, you know, certainly if the board has a different level of risk tolerance, we should talk about that. But it's something that we definitely need to keep an eye on in terms of what happens year after year. Because there are certainly a lot of years where this amount didn't pan out. And so we're gonna have to think about where that money comes from. And so this has been, the situation has been somewhat beneficial to the village in the sense of, we've only budgeted to need a certain amount. And then we've seen quite a bit more come in. And what we've done with that funding is we have used it to backfill the village's rainy day fund. We've also used those funds to pay for smaller capital purchases like vehicles, minor building projects, equipment. equipment purchases, that sort of thing. So we haven't had to borrow for those types of things because we've had a little bit of money left over from things like this, as well as, you know, not having our, our police department full-staffed, which produced some money for, for a surplus. So we are entering a situation where maybe we are full-staffed, and now we're relying on some needing to have this investment income. So now we're kind of creating a situation where all this little flexibility that we had built into our budget that maybe we could confidently feel good about, there are maybe some dynamics where we start to feel like, maybe we need to be a little bit more careful, and we need to think about this a little bit more. So bring that to your attention. And that is end up, that was the, this was the, the line item that we used to, to balance the budget. And then, as I do every year, and we've talked about this ad nauseam, but, you know, there's sort of this tug of war, right, between, we want to maintain our services. We have a growing community, we have these sort of flat or slowly growing revenue sources. We all want to have a desire to try to keep operations running smoothly in the face of this. And, you know, some of the discussions we've had about being proactive, about either trying to get more revenue or thinking about expenditure reallocations. Those are good things, I, I think, to, to talk about, and because we have those options. But at some point, the system might make a decision for you, right? In the sense of people start to feel burned out, and maybe there are resignations, people, maybe there are some sort of service failure that is unexpected, or some sort of harm happens to an employee or to the public because of something. Or there's maybe a feeling of like, why aren't we doing that? What happened to this project we talked about? Why isn't it getting done? So these things sort of happen, sometimes unexpectedly and sometimes slowly over time. And when this dynamic continues to sort of fester out there, I think it creates a little bit more level of a risk that something will give, we just don't know when. And so I think having, continuing to have these conversations is, is important, as we, we just did in the previous item. And at the end of the day, there's really only two sides of the ledger really to talk about here, and that's expenditures or revenue. And of course, expenditures is reducing and reallocating away from other services to different services that we feel is maybe more of a priority. And then on the revenue side, you know, we have maybe some options in terms of like a stormwater utility, but really, the big one is the referendum. Going to move on from there. Anything on the general fund that we can talk about?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, kind of to jump back to the slide on four oh three, which was the, where we're contrasting and comparing the increases in our, the net allowable, net of new construction allowable increase versus the CPI. And I guess, as I look at that, the uncomfortable part of it is the last five years that CPI has been consistently higher than our net of new construction. And in fact, this year, it would probably be about equal if it wasn't for the fact that we had an extraordinary year in net of new construction. And so then we're looking, so what's next year, and what's the next year's cost? As I, I know, it's, it's no crystal ball kind of scenario, you, you, we're all just kind of guessing here. You are, one thing that offsets some of this is in the years that you have a high CPI, you also have a high investment rate. So that, that's one of the reasons why we saw the investment income jump up later on in the years that, that really, if, and I was just playing with numbers today, we probably, in our budget, real dollars, kind of lost, probably lost a half million dollars in budgets in those five years. And, you know, so you look at this year and you say, well, it was, it was, we had a three point eight nine percent increase of net of new construction. We got to, so you only really have one point two real dollars available, and that's only like seventy thousand dollars. And I guess when I start looking at what the Fed's doing, I guess I'm sort of anticipating that, that there could be a inflationary increase next year. They, they're going to start, the incentive being driven by the current administration is to pump up the economy and get it moving faster, which would hurt the inflation rate, which then puts us back into the same scenario where we're the last five years. Might be able to offset that, some of that with, with investment income, you might have improved investment income. But I guess when I start to see that, then I start to say, well, and I want to prioritize in twenty twenty-seven, public safety, and I do. It's like, so then do I start conditioning things this year? And that's where I start to look at new positions. We're adding new positions in a couple places. Is that the best thing to do? Because once you make those new positions, you can't just cut them off. And I want to support and help the, the current staff and help them as much as we can. But it gives me a lot of reservations about new positions.
Yeah, and it, it brings up another point, too, about the village's growth. And we, we've talked about it a little bit in some of the budget meetings. I, I feel pretty, obviously, this year is another year where we're going, right? And we're probably going to see something vaguely similar to this year. I think that twenty twenty-six will be another year where it's pretty similar to what we've seen the last couple of years. But we talked about, I think after twenty twenty-six, you know, kind of the bread and butter, the, that's sort of driven economic growth in Oregon, which is subdivisions, is closed, right? Because there's going to be a lot of subdivisions that are done, right? And so there's really only going to be one game in town, which is the Greenview Preserve, the Meridian Development. And they have maybe three, two to three phases left after twenty twenty-six. So, you know, we could see, we, there is a very real scenario where growth suddenly, these numbers start to look like one percent. And this number is looking like a hundred thousand. And that really becomes very challenging for everything. You know, when you've got to divvy up a hundred thousand dollars over a six mil, six, well, ten million dollars operation at the end, nine million dollar operation at the end of the day, that goes by in a blink of an eye. I mean, you can barely even do half a percentage point for, for village wage increases. So we'll see. There's options out there for development. There's people asking questions, and developers would like a piece of the pie that's exterior of, of the village. And, but it's all conditional on a lot of factors and whether property owners are interested in, in doing some of that stuff. So we'll see over the next couple of years. Yeah, did that address everything? I feel like I had one more point to make.
I think we sort of talked about the same thing.
Yeah.
In general, but I guess the, you know, it's the, do we, with, with a priority of, of trying to become more focused on public safety.
Sure.
Do we start making adjustments this year and withholding some things back?
Right.
And it would be in, in new positions, because you really can't do it anywhere else.
Right. I think knowing what we know about how this year is going and how we, I think, feel relatively confident about development, next year, I think for the next two budget years, what will be the twenty-seven budget and the twenty-eight budget, I think we'll feel pretty, it'll be pretty similar to what we're seeing this year. And so I think, even absent a referendum next year, I think if you said, if you asked me, could we fill an officer position? Could we do wage stuff for officers? Could we do something reasonable for the rest of the staff? I'd say, yeah, I think, I feel pretty confident that I could, I could probably do the budget now. And I bet it would be pretty close to where it ends up being. And I think we, I feel confident about the year after that in twenty twenty-eight, too, because I think growth will generally sustain itself through twenty twenty-six. So that new construction number will probably be pretty close to similar. So, you know, it's, it's public safety, and, and the police department is priority in twenty twenty-seven. But if you're not trying to address the other services, too, we could have this same exact conversation that we just had about the police department, about any one of our other departments as well, right? So if you're holding things back, not taking advantage of some of these opportunities to try to get, especially if the conversation here and the support here is, well, we, we really want to try to maintain everything. Well, then we have to try to, try to do that. We have to try to divvy up these resources in a way that is beneficial to all these operations so that we can keep sustaining. Otherwise, the conversation is, well, if we're holding things back, then we need to talk about, well, we need to stop doing some things because we're just causing more problems for our existing staff.
Any else? Len?
I have a specific line item question on the general fund sheets. Should I hold that question?
So. No, you can ask that question. I am, I was just gonna, the only thing I have left really to do is, I should just use these things that Candy takes the time to do. Scrolling. Shout out. The only thing I really had left to do was just to cover, briefly recap capital and debt. I think we talked about those things, debt, over the summer and, and early fall here. But, you know, we've seen this thing a hundred times. But basically, what's happening now is this number, these numbers in the twenty twenty-six budget or line, or the column here, they're all translated into the actual budget now, right? So now they're all going to start showing up here. So everything that we talked about for twenty twenty-six, that's listed for twenty twenty-six, we have it in the budget, it's in there. In terms of debt service, again, we know, we have, we know what our payments need to be. That budget is not overly exciting, we have to make our debt payments. But then just recapping there, you know, kind of where we foresee our debt service levy going, based on our CIP. Again, we've talked about a lot of that and knowing where our debt limit is. So there's nothing, nothing new in those sections, other than just to say that we have now transitioned from the long-term planning, and we've taken the twenty twenty-six year and planted it into the twenty twenty-six budget. In terms of the general fund itself, the only thing that I really wanted to draw attention to, and then I'm happy to answer some questions here. But initially, this, I'm bringing up this point because of, because of you, Len, because you asked this question a couple of meetings ago about, well, is there anywhere else that we can reduce costs? And so I wanted, I just want to show kind of the makeup of our line item budget and to kind of give you a sense of what this thing looks like, and why that question. Four ninety-nine.
Thank you.
And why there's just really isn't something easy to sort of identify out and reduce. So first of all, I just want to point to the revenue side of things. So this is the revenues for the general fund, taxes, intergovernmental revenues. So general property taxes for village, you know, we talked about the five point three million. And just so you know, twenty twenty-six department head, twenty twenty-six admin, twenty-six adopted, they're all the same. Just, we just populate all of them the same. So they're no different, but you can take that to mean that that's the twenty twenty-six budget that's proposed. So the five point three million in general property tax for the village. So when we go to the end of the general fund budget and just look at the totals, the expenditures for, that we're anticipating for the general fund, just under nine million. So when we're talking, just in that general property tax line item alone, you know, we're talking a hu, you know, over fifty percent of our entire budget is in this, is funded by this single line item. And then when you count for the other sources of taxes that we have, you know, the wheel tax and our room tax and some of these other things. And then you count for shared revenue sources from the state. So again, here, there's that county and municipal aid. We have some other little tiny little aid programs that the city is, or that the, the state has created, transportation aids. You know, these things that we don't, we don't control these things necessarily. They're sort of dictated to us, handed down to us. That's one point six million. So we're talking, you know, like I said before, eighty-seven percent of the entire village budget is in this, is funded by this chunk alone, right? And then when we talk about licenses and permits, we're talking about tiny percentages, like one percent, two percent, three percent of our budget is funded by these things. So when we talk about these things, we're, we're tinkering around with tiny numbers. So when we talk about increasing permit fees or talk about traffic enforcement, you know, those are just miniscule numbers in the grand scheme of things. I mean, fines, forfeitures, and penalties, which is essentially traffic enforcement, is like one, less than one percent, one percent of the budget is funded through that. Public charges for services, again, another, you know, two percent. Intergovernmental charges for services, another two percent. Miscellaneous revenue, you know, maybe we're up three, four percent. But a huge chunk of that is this number that we just talked about, which is that investment income. So, you know, if there's any point I could drive home from this conversation again is that we are so beholden to these revenue sources up here. I mean, when you're talking eighty-seven percent of your budget is funded there, and there just really isn't any other good options to generate a large amount of revenue other than through, again, the property tax and through a referendum. So then on the expenditure side, you know, you can see these other, we have these, them split up into, you know, specific functions, right? So village board, municipal court, legal, executives, administrator, clerk. So you'll see sort of two sets of funds in, predominantly in the general fund. There is these, the, you know, take my budget here, for example, which have, you know, the upper third here is salaries and benefits. And then you have kind of the bottom sixty percent, which is, you know, phone costs, office supplies, training costs, dues for professional associations, some operating supplies. So in the, this whole budget, there's a hundred and forty thousand dollars that were budgeted, but a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty of it is salaries and benefits. And then there's this minor, maybe ten thousand dollar amount of just smaller costs to beat up across different things. And it's true of all functions where we have staff, right? Accounting is the finance department, just this overweighted amount of dollars in salaries. And then you have this sort of tiny, more miniscule amount of dollars that are in sort of the operating side of things. The other sort of version of this is what you see sort of like in the computer spot where it's clearly a contracted service, right? We don't have employees who do IT. So here is the cost for our computer consultant and some other contractual costs, it's like website and things like that. And so you see these, you know, large numbers that account for contractual costs, right? That we already have defined. And so going down the entire budget, you'll see that time and time again, where it's the function, it's predominantly staff, and then you have these small line item numbers for just general operating costs. So when we talk about, was there anywhere else? Well, the anywhere else is staff, right? Because we can, we can tinker with a five hundred dollars here, a thousand dollars there, but it's not going to get you the kind of money that we're talking about when we're talking about the needs for some of these departments, trying to maintain some of these services. So, you know, to answer a month later, your question a little bit more in detail, you know, that's sort of what this manifests and looks like. So is there, did you have another question?
Yeah, so I'm glad that you gave that little preface because I think that it's important for the public to know that all of this is out here. We say it every single year, we're not hiding something behind, in a folder, that we're not putting out there. Everything down to the scent is here, and it is something that we review every year. And, yeah, we're, we're not going to squeeze juice out of a, what was, was the saying? Raisin, anyway.
Blood from a stone.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And so I think it's important that the public kind of understand where we are. Now, I will also say that I take my job very seriously in these, that I, I do want to look through each and every single line item. I understand that I'm not going to save thousands of dollars. But my question is actually on page one seventeen, or like one seventeen of the, the budget, thank you. And this is for Lauren, sorry, Lauren, heads up. The, in the Health and Human Services Cemetery section, there is an Other Contractual Services. This caught my eye because of the percentage increase, a two thousand seven hundred and eighty percent increase. This is for the contract that, I, I, tell me if I'm wrong, but what I think this is, is the contract that we decided to do this year to contract. to contract out the mowing services for the cemetery instead of using public works staff for this.
That's correct.
And so first I want to just call that out. That's why we're seeing a huge jump in that amount. But then also I wanted to check in with you because I felt like this was a good time for us to check in about this. Is this worth the investment? Is this worth, are we seeing gains in other spaces for the money that we're putting here? Are we happy with what we've received in service this summer? Could you give us a general idea of whether this percentage increases?
Yes, so I, I think I've told Martin this in the past in our meetings. This is the one item in our budget that I would happily go to the mat for. This has been huge for our operations. The level of staff stress that has gone down and the ability to get to other projects, other priorities, actually address a lot of things that had gotten postponed over the years because we were kind of all scrambling to deal with the mowing at the cemetery. And that includes utility staff as well in certain cases. Uh, this has just been a huge morale booster as well as productivity booster. So absolutely, I would say this is, this is very worth the funding.
And will we stay with the, the company we contracted with or are we looking at other bids?
No, we, we've been very happy with Maple Leaf. And they, when we first went out to bids last year, they were by far the least expensive option significantly. And I think Nick spoke to upwards of five firms and they were probably at least 50% of the price of the next lowest firm. So given our satisfaction with them and kind of that history, we decided to, to move forward with them again.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, so I think, I think I've said this too in previous years and we could, and this kind of goes back to sort of the first thing I said about the budget, whereas, you know, some municipalities spend a lot of time starting with, well, let's take a look at the cemetery budget and let's, you know, go line by line, right? When you have that greater context, it sort of puts things into perspective a little bit. And I think from like a line item perspective, you know, I have no doubt that I could probably go through this budget and probably find 500 here, 1,000 there. Oh, this seems a little bit more than maybe you think it maybe need to be. But then a couple of line items later, it's like, oh, maybe you're being a little too, not conservative enough. Maybe you need a little bit more there. And so you take 500 away here and it's like, oh, I think you maybe need 1,000 more there. And so it kind of becomes this whole thing about, um, level of risk. And at the end of the day, you know, could I find maybe 20 to 30,000 dollars and cross all of these line items? Maybe. But then what are we doing? We're decreasing the 20,000, 30,000 dollars on the investment income, right? And so we're not relying on that as much. And I think another benefit that we have with this village and the way that we've sort of approached budgeting, and just how we've treated departments. There is a, a, a good cult, budget culture, I would say internally, in terms of, there are some government agencies where there sort of becomes this mentality where if you don't spend it, you don't get to have it the next year. And so there becomes this culture of, we need to spend everything we get so that we can show that we need it. And that doesn't really exist here. So people are turning back money that they don't actually need at the end of the year. But there are some situations where we have had, we do need to go over budget because something happened or some other, you know, thing came up. And so there's a, a nice balance of, you know, respecting department heads and giving them authority and flexibility. And I think that has been returned in kind back to the budget process and back to the village and back to the village board in terms of the, the department heads are going to spend the money that they think they need to spend, not just what they want to spend. And so, um, you know, I think questions like that where you see those 2,780% spikes, those are great. Those are awesome questions and, um, I think we're happy to talk about any individual line item. Certainly welcome to contact department heads directly if you see some things that you maybe want some more questions on or answers on. At the next meeting, I'll go a little bit more detail on some of these, but, um, um, I think I'll probably leave it there for tonight.
Okay. Additional questions to come, Amanda, please.
Yeah, just as a kind of a reminder, and it, this kind of dovetails what you said, Martin. Budgets are moral documents. This budget, it shows people what we prioritize. And so I feel like in general, we're pretty people, people first kind of budget. We, we care about the people that work for the village and we want to take care of them because they do a really great job. And so I think that's important to remember.
It is. Anybody else? Rick?
I guess I'll go along with that and also add that I think, you know, you talked a lot about funding and where it's coming from and the fact that there's a really high percentage of it coming from property tax. I certainly don't like having to pay taxes unless I can really be convinced it's necessary. But I also recognize that if there's a necessity, that the way to get that funding is likely through property taxes rather than some other form that's more regressive to the, you know, and flatter in a way that it really makes it less, uh, equitable or fair to the people that are actually benefiting from those services. So as much as I'm not going to ever be happy to see it go up, um, I certainly would prefer that to, you know, trying to, with, and, and also your point of making it very difficult to be able to fill a gap by increasing park fees a thousand percent or something. So I appreciate the budget.
What else? Okay, to be continued. Item 10. Reports of village officers, department heads and consultants, information only. A is a village administrator report. Questions, comments? B is a, a village consultant engineer report on a country engineering. August 25, 25 monthly report for wastewater upgrades project, including in the packet. Any questions on that one?
Nice pictures.
Nice pictures, right? Pictures are always good. And let's see, uh, C is police chief report media release regarding missing juvenile dated 9/15/2025 and also revisions to victim witness FDO weapons and ammunition and firearm policies. The special purpose vehicle policy. Questions? Item 11, announcements and miscellaneous business. A announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events and miscellaneous business. Let's start with department heads, staff, chief, please.
I just have one. Starting tomorrow, we will be going through our accreditation onsite. So for the next three days, um, our staff will be up to the task of going through that. For those that are newer to it, um, what it is, is, uh, three to four people will come in. They're typically executives from other law enforcement agencies. They'll look at whether or not we meet the 262 standards that Wile E. requires of you. They not only look at policy to make sure that standard is covered, but then they will look at three years' worth of proof that you actually do what you say you're going to do in the policy. So that would be, you know, year one, you're doing it, year two, you're doing it, year three, you're doing it. So I mean, this has been, uh, well over a year of preparation by our staff to get this done. I, our accreditation manager is Lieutenant Shawb. He does a fantastic job. They'll get a tour of our police department. We get to highlight a lot of the programs we did in this three years, we're being evaluated for. And we're looking forward to getting through it. I think we will successfully get through it. I, I think we take accreditation very seriously. A lot of departments in our position, um, with the higher demand for policing right now have asked for extensions. But we're just not gonna, we're not going to ask for that. We're going to get this done, um, because we really believe in it. So happy to ask, answer any questions about it, but otherwise I just wanted to make the board aware that we will be going through this daunting but exciting task. Thank you.
Other staff or department heads? Village board, announcements, comments, communications. Amanda?
Still need people for public transportation committee. Go to the village website to apply if you're interested. You do not need experience, just an interest in transportation.
Go ahead, babe.
I also have been opening on the DEI committee. So same thing, applications are online. Thank you.
I would note, and maybe you saw it in the, uh, village administrator report that, uh, we were invited to meet with, uh, the mayor of Pittsburgh and the mayor of Corona, myself, and, uh, respective administrators, including Martin. Just to see top of mind if there's any interest in fire EMS consolidation, which I find very exciting. That was the extent of the meeting. That is, everyone expressed interest. We set up the next meeting. We'll see where it goes from there. But I thought I'd pass that along. Any additional comment, Martin, or?
I think we talked about maybe put it on as an agenda item for the next meeting and
Yeah.
see what, uh, some thoughts of the board and, um, where this might go.
Okay. Okay. Item 11B, future agenda items. Tom?
I've gotten, uh, several, like maybe like eight or nine comments now about people, uh, the proliferation, prolifer, getting a lot more
I see.
of electronic, electric bikes. And not, and I don't mean like bicycles, electric bicycles, but, but essentially electric motorcycles for all intents and purposes, as well as scooters and, and, uh, general observation of their, um, desire or frequency of the failure to, um, respond to regular rules of the road as a vehicle. I don't want to put anything else on anybody's plate and I don't know if that's a future agenda item talk, to talk about, that we need something there. But I guess there's a public awareness of, of a lot more skateboards and scooters zipping off the sidewalk, down a driveway, into the street, crossed in front of cars, and then so forth. So just an observation.
I just wonder if we could, uh, put it on there just to tell us, you could then tell us where you are right now on this. I know we've talked about it and I, I have to agree that there's certainly an increased problem. And, you know, you have strained resources as well as perhaps limits on what the ordinance is currently read versus what maybe we want to do. So maybe just a future, you could tell us where you are right now and then we could, uh, talk about what we want to go from there.
Sure.
Okay. And anything else? When you first said you had nine items, I thought you had nine future agenda items. Anyway, anybody else for future agenda items? Okay, item 12, as our business is concluded, without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much for sitting through a long meeting, but productive.